I'd like to call this November 5th meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mullinger?
Here.
Let the record show that all of the school board members are present tonight along with our division superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett, our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, our clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, and our deputy clerk tonight, Ms. Subar is with us. Happy to have you, along with members of our division leadership team as well. At this time, I'll turn things over to our student liaison, Malcolm Richardson.
Today, given the invocation, is Donovan Pace from Bethel High School. He's a junior at the home of the Bruins. He's a varsity basketball player. I heard he's pretty good. And eventually wants to work with math. He has one brother who's here and a sister who's not here. And his principal, Mrs. Saunders, is also here. Could the people who are here to support him, please stand up?
Good evening, Ms. Mullinger, school board members, and Dr. Shiflett. My name is Donovan Pace. I'm a junior at Bethel High School, the home of academic success. I am pleased to give the invocation this evening. I have a poem titled "Be Thankful" from an unknown author. And it reads, "Be thankful that you do not have everything you desire. If you did, what would there be to look forward to? Be thankful when you don't know everything, for it gives you the opportunity to learn. Be thankful for difficult times; during these times, you grow. Be thankful for your limitations, because they give you the opportunities for improvement. Be thankful for each new challenge, because it will build your strength and success. Be thankful for your mistakes; they will teach you valuable lessons. And be thankful for when you're tired and weary, because it means you have made a difference." And now, can you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pace, for joining us tonight and leading us in our invocation and the pledge. We appreciate your being here.
Ms. Mullinger.
Yes, sir. We have another board member that I think wants to make a comment.
Donovan, this guy here I've known since he was like... Jay, stand up a minute. Well, he was younger than that. He tried to be a basketball player like him, but Donovan, I'm really honored to have you to come here tonight and do this, my man. It takes it a notch above just an athlete, a student athlete, and that's a good thing. I know your parents right there, how would Miss Pace raise her hand? They're very proud of you. So keep up the good work, my man. They'll give me a job one day. Thank you, Ms. Mullinger.
Absolutely. Thank you again for joining us. We appreciate you taking time out of what I know is a very busy schedule. We are lucky tonight to have the Armstrong School for the Arts 5th Grade Select Chorus join us and give us a little musical presentation, so if they'll come forward and join us on the stage.
Everyone knows music is a part of a well-rounded education. But did you know that music can improve our learning? Music can help us make better grades. Music can help us perform better on standardized tests. Music training enhances brain function. Music is a core academic subject, just like math and reading. Music students are more likely to achieve academic honors and awards. Music students are more likely to achieve higher math and verbal SAT scores.
Do you know what music brings to us? As we learn, as we go? Do you know that music plays a part? In the way we can grow? Do you know why? Do you know why? Why music?
Everyone knows music is a part of a well-rounded education. But did you know that music can improve our learning? Music can help us make better grades. Music can help us perform better on standardized tests. Music training enhances brain function. Music is a core academic subject, just like math and reading. Music students are more likely to achieve academic honors and awards. Music students are more likely to achieve higher math and verbal SAT scores.
Do you know what music brings to us? As we learn, as we go? Do you know that music plays a part? In the way we can grow? Do you know why? Do you know why? Why music?
Music education helps us integrate learning across the curriculum. It can also help us learn to pay attention, perseverance, and solve problems. Music can contribute to a more positive self-consciousness.
It can help us achieve social skills and teamwork.
Music can help us express feelings in many ways. Most of the program have higher graduation and attendance rates. Music students are more likely to plan to attend college. According to congressional resolution, music should be available to every student in every school.
Do you know what music brings to us? As we learn, as we go? Do you know that music plays a part? In the way we can grow? Do you know why? Do you know why? Why music?
Are you Lions? Yes. Awesome job by our 5th graders at Armstrong School for the Arts. And I think we'll be talking about them again in a couple of minutes. At this time, we're going to move on to our recognitions, and I'll turn things over to our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, and she'll be assisted tonight by school board member Jason Samuels.
He's gonna come up in just a second. We have a video. We have this all planned out, don't we?
Very good. Don't want to interfere.
Good evening. The first group we will recognize is Armstrong School for the Arts, a national blue ribbon school. Before we ask them to come up on stage, PEG TV has produced a video that we would like to show that highlights Armstrong and this award. Roll the video.
Hampton City Schools has some wonderful news to share about Armstrong School for the Arts. Armstrong is one of seven public schools statewide named as a national blue ribbon school. The national designation is for schools that achieve very high learning standards or are making notable improvements in closing their achievement gap. U.S. Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan, recently recognized the recipients.
And today, I'm really pleased to be designating your school and 336 other schools across the nation as national blue ribbon schools. And it's a great, great privilege to celebrate your success. Thank you for what you do every single day to foster curiosity and persistence and the joy of learning for our nation's children. Congratulations, and please keep up the great work.
We have called you here today so we can celebrate our accomplishment as being selected as a 2014 National Blue Ribbon School.
I was really honored that my school was chosen, because this school has been an amazing school for me ever since kindergarten, so very excited.
We do all of our work. We have the best principal ever, and all our teachers are great workers.
We are a blue ribbon school, a national blue ribbon school. And we were also asked to write essays, if you will, on 12 different categories, such as what our school does differently when we teach language arts, math. We had a section on integrating the arts, parental involvement, and the vision and mission of our principal. What makes our school different from every other school, not just in the division, but in the country? And how we are able to successfully raise our test scores so that each child, every child in the school, is successful?
Blue Ribbon School is the pillar of success for all the school's hard work. It shows that your school is in the top 1% of all the schools in the United States of America and the overseas islands.
This award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools. Congratulations, Armstrong School for the Arts. All of your hard work and dedication made this happen. Have a wonderful school year.
Now, we'd like to ask Mr. Jason Samuels, our newest board member, to come forward to help recognize Armstrong School for the Arts. Ms. Levia Stovall, principal, and her team are here tonight to be recognized. Please come forward.
Take your time, please.
As the staff and students make their way toward us, I just want you to know, we really do appreciate the school board for celebrating us tonight. When we got the word last January that we would be nominated, we'd been nominated as a national blue ribbon school, the leadership team, which most of the staff members you see standing here, were told to take the components of the application and write like their hair was on fire. And they did. So we knew that we had to, we had outstanding test scores, we have supportive families, we have outstanding students, and we have a phenomenal staff. So I can't say enough about them. They know how much it means for us to celebrate this success, not only for Armstrong, but for Hampton City Schools. We put Hampton City Schools on the map, and we are so thankful that you all have invited us here tonight to celebrate us. Thank you. Yeah, one more thing to say. We've been waiting to say this all year. At Armstrong School for the Arts, we are to...
To be defeated!
To positive, to be negative, and to determined to be defeated. Thank you. You should know it too. Thank you.
This is really, really personal for me, because I believe I was a part of this process. And my daughter was a part of this process last year. And I am extremely proud and honored to present to you this certificate of achievement on behalf of the Hampton City School Board. For you receiving, for you to, for Hampton, for Armstrong School of the Arts to receive this blue ribbon award, I am extremely proud and honored, and I would just like to present to you this certificate. And thank you so much.
Thank you. What'd you say? Thank you! Thank you. I'd like for all our parents to stand. We brought our crew with us tonight. Where are the rest of our parents? They're out there somewhere. These kids didn't come by themselves. Thank you.
Next, we would like to recognize Vivian Greasy, Curriculum Leader for Fine Arts, and Kelly D., Teacher Specialist for Music. Due to their leadership, Hampton City Schools has been designated a NOM Best Community for Music Education for three years. It was invited to submit a video illustrating the unique greatness of our music education programs. The video submitted by HCS helped earn the two-day stay of the John Lennon Educational Tour Bus. In addition, the NOM Foundation, SupportMusic.com, and HCS hosted a music education community forum at the convention center. Here is a video produced by PEG TV that shares a little more about this experience.
I think it's pretty fun and entertaining. It's a lot on here and a lot of technology that I'm not used to normally seeing.
It's kind of difficult trying to like, make all of our ideas match together.
We want them to leave the bus knowing that, you know, this is a potential avenue for a career. This is, you know, something realistic that they might not have thought was a realistic option for their, for their career. We're bringing together music educators from all over the state in southeastern Virginia to talk about the importance of music education in students' lives and in schools.
We find that students that have access to high-quality music educator teaching, a music program in school as part of the core curriculum do well academically, socially, in every way that you could measure.
This is like, a dream come true to me. It's like, really fun. It's gonna be awesome.
I would like to ask Vivian Greasy and Kelly D. to come forward to be recognized.
Just that we couldn't do it without all of our wonderful educators, our music educators, and all the support of the division. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Hampton School Board, we would like to present to you with this certificate of achievement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we would like to recognize Bryan Elementary School.
Are they here? All right. Thanks to the hard work of their students and staff members, along with the support of the community, Bryan has earned conditional accreditation. In the 2011-12 school year, Bryan received accreditation warning in both English and math. In a single year, they improved pass rates in math by 38%. That deserves applause. This was the second-largest gain in the division. They increased the passage rate in English by 15%, which was the largest gain in the division. They also significantly decreased the number of truant students. Although we recognize that Bryan has more work to do, it is important to note the significant progress made so far. Despite a variety of challenges, Bryan Elementary has proven that hard work, focus, and dedication can positively impact student achievement. We would like Lynette Nelms, principal, and her staff to come forward to be recognized.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board, for recognizing the hardest work and staff for Hampton City Schools. I just want to say to my Bryan Patriots, thank you for believing in our students. Thank you for setting high expectations. Thank you for taking the time to build relationships with not only our students, but our parents. Your hard work, your dedication, and your commitment is truly having a positive impact on student achievement in J&amp;H Bryan, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
You're just eager to go, aren't you? On behalf of the Hampton School Board, I would like to present this certificate of achievement to Bryan Elementary School and say congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It is now my pleasure to recognize Bethel High School's Literary and Art Magazine, Polaris, for earning a first-place rating with a superior ranking for literary content at the Virginia High School League's Media Championships. This is the fourth consecutive year that the magazine has placed first in their category under the leadership of Tracy Rice-Weber. Editors for this issue are Brittany Peck and Kayla Holston. Layout editors are Alexis Bracy and Taylor DeRosset. Submissions manager is Emily Veroni, and the 2014 staff includes Rachel Dobbins, Jasmine Miller, and Victoria Ralph. Now, listen to this. This school has been, has received recognition 21 times since the magazine was established. We would like to ask Ms. Rice-Weber and her students to come forward to be recognized.
Bethel High School has had a tradition of excellence in publications for many, many, many years, long before I ever made the scene, but I'm very pleased to continue that tradition and to be a part of it. Thank you.
And I get the honors again. On behalf of the Hampton School Board, I would like to personally say congratulations on your achievement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have copies for all of us.
I'll take mine.
While they're passing out copies of the magazine, I know we have several Bethel staff who are here to support the magazine. Would you all please stand? We would now like to recognize Jackie Kendall, a health and physical education teacher who has been named the Virginia Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Middle School Physical Education Teacher of the Year for 2014. Let's give her a round of applause. While she's coming up here, I'll give you a little bit of information about the award. The eligibility requirements to be considered for the award include a minimum of five years' teaching experience, a degree and certification in teaching, and a minimum of 50% of total job responsibilities in teaching either adapted physical education, physical education, dance education, or school health education. The nominee must also have the Certified Adaptive Physical Education Certification and submit a total of four letters of recommendation from a fellow teacher, administrator, supervisor, and parent or child. Jackie has been teaching 11 years with Hampton City Schools and has taught in a variety of places, including Booker Elementary School, Mallory Elementary School, Spratley Middle School, Sims Middle School, and she is currently at Phoebus High School. She was Teacher of the Year for Sims Middle School for 2013-14. Congratulations.
Wow. Wow, this is indeed an honor. As I look out, I see so many of my colleagues and former administrators, and I want to thank you guys. Thank you guys for buying into some of my wacky ideas and let me create. When I started out in 1984 with Hampton City School, I've been a bulldog, I've been a tiger, I've been a saint, I've been a Spartan, I've been a warrior, because I was coaching over at Kickitán, I've been a Bruin, and now I am a Phantom. And through it all, I am just so thankful for the students, for the colleagues. The experience has been great, and hopefully there'll be many more. Thank you. On behalf of the Hampton School Board, I would like to personally present to you this certificate of achievement for your outstanding achievements. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
It is now my pleasure to introduce Larry Price with Synergistic to present the award for energy stewardship.
Should I talk to you or them? Them. Good evening. My name's Larry Price. I am a retired school superintendent from North Carolina, and I work for a company called Synergistic, of which you are a partner. For the past 11 months, you all have been working extremely hard with energy conservation here in your school division. And during the year, from October to October, you've saved enough energy to effectively plant 90,000 trees in your community. And you have reduced the BTUs of energy, and you've reduced the carbon footprint here in your community by more than 30 million BTUs of energy. the carbon footprint here in your community by more than 30 million BTUs of energy. So we're proud to present Hampton City Schools tonight with an award for energy stewardship. The award recognizes the district's efforts to implement an innovative organizational behavior change, energy conservation program, and management. The Board of Education, Superintendent Shiflett, Director of Operations and Maintenance, Tom Sawyer, and the administration are demonstrating wise fiscal and environmental stewardship by implementing this unique energy conservation program. Using human resources to reduce energy use saves natural and financial resources for the school division and the community. The program also delivers an environmental benefit from the reduced carbon footprint. Energy not used prevents the emissions of carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, and nitrogen oxides into the environment. Energy specialists John Cobberly and Phil Malina receive intensive training from Synergistic, and they work in the school district to implement conservation procedures in all of the system's facilities. They work hard to motivate everyone in the organization to use energy wisely, keep classrooms comfortable, and practice smart energy strategies. So congratulations to all of you at Hampton City Schools for success in your energy conservation journey so far. I'd like to have Mr. Sawyer and Mr. Connolly and Mr. Malio to come up for a presentation, and I'm not sure if anybody here is going to join them. So this is a plaque, and it is indeed Hampton City Schools presented an award for energy stewardship for outstanding environmental resource stewardship, and we're very proud of you all for that, so you all can determine the appropriate place to hang that. And as I mentioned, nearly 90,000 trees planted, also the equivalent of taking 730 cars off of the road, and I was in your rush hour today, and 730 cars off the road would have been a nice thing. So congratulations to all of you for your work, and we look forward to our continued partnership over the next several years. Congratulations.
It is now my pleasure to introduce Superintendent Dr. Linda Shiflett, who will be presenting the Virginia School Boards Association Academy Awards.
So many of you may see the school board members sit up here during the school board meetings and think that that's all they do. They just sit up there during the school board meetings and listen to reports and vote on policies. But I have to tell you, they do so much more. The work that they do in terms of advocacy for this school division, and the work that they do in terms of learning how to do a better job of being a school board member, and in getting out in the community, and it's all invaluable to Hampton City Schools. So tonight, it is my pleasure to present to them some awards for the work that they've done. And so what I'd like to do is ask all of you to come forward up here, please. They're not accustomed to doing this. The first award is an award of honor to Monica Smith for her commitment to effective school board governance through her participation in the VSBA School Board Academy for 2012 through 2014. Ms. Smith? The award of excellence is presented to Phyllis Henry, again, for her commitment to effective school board governance through her participation in the VSBA School Board Academy 2012 through 14. The next is an award of distinction, presented to Joseph Kilgore, and again, it's for his participation in the Virginia School Board Academy. An award of distinction is presented to Mrs. Martha Mugler for the VSBA School Board Academy 2012 through 14. An award of achievement is presented to William Pearson for his commitment to the school board and the VSBA School Board Academy 2013 through 14. And last but not least is an award of achievement to Linwood Harper for the participation in the VSBA School Board Academy from 2013 through 2014. Now, you'll notice that there is one school board member that hasn't gotten their certificate yet, and this is called peer pressure. And it's only because he is brand-new to the school board. And so please join me in welcoming Mr. Jason Samuels as the newest member of our school board.
And don't go way too far. Dr. Shiflett, the Virginia School Board Association also wanted to recognize you and present you with an award of excellence for your commitment to board governance through your participation in the VSBA School Board Academy.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our recognitions this evening, and so we will move forward with our consent agenda. Again, congratulations to all the schools that were recognized tonight, the Armstrong Lions, the Bethel Bruins, the Bryan Patriots, and also our very outstanding employees who were recognized tonight in the areas of music and physical education. If we move on now to consent agenda, which is items 4.01 through 4.06, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? I usually read this before, but I'll tell you now, the consent agenda tonight consists of a personnel report, 14-19, minutes of the school board meeting of October 1, 2014, minutes of the school board meeting of October 15, 2014, the certification of the closed session of October 1, 2014, the certification of the closed session of October 15, 2014, and a field trip. If there is no additional discussion, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to superintendent and staff reports, and I'll turn things over this time to Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Our first report this evening is an update on our one-to-one program, and as many of you recall, we did a pilot of the one-to-one last year. It was very successful. We have done quite an implementation this year, and Dr. John Cagiano, John Eagle, Cheryl Grobel, and Sean Holleran will provide us with an update this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shiflett. We also have a couple of members of our work team in the audience. If I could recognize Ms. Jen Lockett and Mr. Greg Bornstein as well. Thank you for joining us. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Pearson, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. We're pleased to be here with you this evening to join you, to share an update regarding Hampton's one-to-one initiative, also known as the iPad Program. Dr. Haynes, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the PowerPoint, please. That's actually not our presentation, but... But it was a good video.
Don't I seen that?
I think we're minimized at the bottom right. I'm sorry, Dr. Haynes. We wanted to begin the presentation tonight just by revisiting the four program goals associated with this initiative, the first being that of improving student achievement. Dr. Johnson has become, has come before the board, along with members of our team, for the last couple of years, to talk about some of the changes in the standards of learning, particularly the rigor associated with a lot of the standards of learning. So it hasn't been as much of a big of a change regarding content. It's more about how our boys and girls are being asked to work with and demonstrate understanding of the standards. If you take a look here, for example, you'll see some boys and girls displaying their iPads with some key verbs there, and a lot of our state standards now require our kids to demonstrate understanding of skills at a much higher level of learning. So we do believe not only that this initiative will increase student achievement, but that it's a great tool, device for addressing higher levels of learning. The other thing regarding improving student achievement is this device naturally puts a lot more information at our kids' fingertips. So you'll be hearing, for example, tonight from Mrs. Grobel, who will share about a program and app called iTunes, which allows us, for example, to share with students the entire curriculum framework documents, for example, for grade five, so, which is hundreds of pages of information that we can't just readily available print for our boys and girls, but it's something that they can use to study, for example, for end-of-quarter tests, chapter tests, as well as end-of-state exams. Increasing student achievement, I'm sorry, increasing student engagement, we had some positive signs when we reflect back on the 2013-14 pilot and some of the work that our work team saw visiting schools. And then when we fast-forward to this year, also, we're seeing signs of increased student engagement. We look forward to following up with stakeholders in the very near future to find out from parents and students and teachers regarding their thoughts around student engagement. Enabling personalized learning, we're also seeing through the pilot, as well as work this first quarter, the opportunities for increased levels of choice. Teachers preparing lessons that do incorporate greater opportunities for choice based on the opportunity to plan for lessons with this particular device. Also, from a differentiation standpoint, for example, students can download apps such as Overdrive that allow boys and girls to download books at their independent reading levels. So a great tool for enabling personalized learning. And again, fast-forwarding to the focus group piece, when we talk about engaging parents and the community in education, we're looking forward to feedback from our stakeholders, parents, in reference to their thoughts regarding some things we can do as a staff to provide workshop opportunities for our parents as well. As Mr. Eagle makes his way to the podium, I did want to share primarily for our viewers at home that this initiative, really, we're going to talk a lot about tonight about the device itself, but that this program is really not strictly about the device. Technology in and of itself is not transformative. It's really the work that our schools and our teachers are doing, planning for teaching and learning with the use of the device that can really, we believe, have a positive impact on student achievement. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I couldn't have said that better. This really is all about student achievement and personalized learning and all those other things. But I am focused in on the business side of the house, the infrastructure, on how to get that device, and the maximum number of devices and the optimum infrastructure to support that as quickly as we can with some of the assumptions where I'm going to go over again with you tonight. This is our business plan timeline. We went over this with you earlier this year. Nothing really has changed. We did do the pilot in the spring. Where we are right now in the 2014-15 school years, we have deployed devices for all fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, or we're in the process of doing it. We've got like maybe 95 percent complete. We are, we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule with deploying in Hampton and Phoebus. We're actually doing Bethel and Kickitane as well with the devices that we have available to do some piloting in the high schools and get that jump-started. So we're actually going to be doing that, distributing to the teachers and getting those devices ready in December. So we think we're going to have a little bit of a jump-start on that. Next year, we're going to continue the program with five, six, seven, and eight, and then we're going to do a full-blown rollout for Hampton High School and Phoebus High School. All the students at Hampton and Phoebus will then have devices as well. Then the following year, we will continue with five, six, seven, and eight, continue with Hampton and Phoebus, and then we will conduct full-blown rollouts for Bethel and Kickitane. So at that point, after a three-year period, we will have devices for every student grades five through 12. Now, in order to do that, you may recall that there's certain business plan assumptions that we made. Obviously, the funding is coming from a sort of earmark that the city provided, $2 million per year to fund the hardware. That also works in conjunction with $500,000 that they put into our school improvement funds that can be used for infrastructure only. They can't be used to purchase devices. We did assume that there were going to be no new positions, no new staffing to support this initiative. That sort of stings a little bit, especially right now, because we are going through, again, the full-blown rollout of 7,000 devices, but I think we've made tremendous progress. The software, the apps are going to be required through existing library, meeting, textbook funding, and we do expect state funds to be available to supplement the program, but we can't necessarily rely on that funding source, and we did, in fact, take advantage of that for the high school pilots that we're doing right now, using the Backpack Initiative funding. So we did a lot of work since we last met with you in the spring. Over the summer, we upgraded all the middle schools and PKA school wireless networks. We set up all the acquisition processes for acquiring things, for doing screen repairs, purchasing cases, accessories, all those sorts of things. We developed a pretty sophisticated one-to-one support internet website, meaning it's a site for staff, it's for administrators, it's for teachers, it's for people assigned various roles to support the program. We also conducted training for literally hundreds of staff members, administrators, teachers. We have these things called Apple ID facilitators. These folks have worked really hard to try to get Apple IDs for all of the students and inventory managers. Of course, we had to acquire the devices, we had to have a staging area and do barcoding and preconfiguring and doing all those things in order to be ready. So progress to date, the devices were distributed through a staggered approach. Obviously, it would be nice if we could say on the first day of school, everybody just walk in and get their device, but that's just not logistically possible. So we did a staggered approach. One of the big things that we have to do with this program is issue Apple IDs. If you have an iOS device, you know that you have to have an Apple ID in order to download apps from the App Store. That's no different in our environment with the personalizing the device, the way we do that. And if you're under 13, the parents have to be involved with that. That's just, that's federal law. That's Apple's way of doing things. And again, that's been, it's been time-intensive. It's been somewhat of a hurdle to get through. The good news is, is this will be the worst year of having to deal with that, because next year, all the students that are already in the program already have Apple IDs, and we only have to deal with new students coming into the division and fifth-grade students. We also spent a whole lot of time over the summer installing software tools to allow us to manage the entire program. It's our goal, really, again, because we're not adding staff members to be as smart as we can, to have the tools and infrastructure and things that we can to enable smart management of all the systems that we have. Again, 22,000 devices. We've also begun experimenting with bring-your-own-device. I've had some parents that said, hey, if I already have an iPad, can't I just use that device? Do I have to take the one that you all issued? So we're doing some experimenting, some piloting with that, and that seems to be going, going well as well. And insurance, this is something that we're looking at and really studying. It's under analysis. We know that we've had some questions about the insurance program, some disappointment that it doesn't cover theft or loss. So we're looking at what the private market offers. We're looking at the numbers as we run the system, because you know, we're basically running an internal system. We're self-insured for all practical purposes, and so the market, you know, they're in it to make money. We're not. So, but we're looking at those numbers, and obviously, we're going to fully vet various options during the school year and make adjustments as time goes on. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Holler.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As my role on the work team, what we focused on was during the feedback process of our pilot, was how could we support our parents? One of the things we decided in a meeting in April of 2014 with our stakeholders that included teachers, parents, our IT members, as well as some of our informational literacy team, and our PTA Council President, Ms. Kroom, was that we needed to provide a resource for our parents to go to when they had those questions. So our parent toolkit was created internally, using some external stakeholders as our guide, particularly the PTA. One of the foundational components was from the Burbank Elementary School PTA presentation that was given to parents. We used that piece with the approval of Ms. Kroom and the PTA Council to develop a one-stop spot for all parents to be able to go to. And when we talk about parents, we obviously are focusing on our five-through-eight parents, but we want to provide it a resource for all of our parents, K through 12, because our students are growing up and living in a digital age. So our focus was, in our main meeting, was to discuss how to do that. So the IT team and informational literacy collaborated on developing a website that's found now on the Hampton City Schools webpage that is connected to every school and division. So if a parent at Burbank Elementary wants to know about the one-stop shop, they can click the button on their website, takes them directly to the Hampton City School site. If they're a Kickitane high school, they can go to the exact same site. So we don't have parents searching here, there, and everywhere. can go to the exact same site. So we don't have parents searching here, there, and everywhere. We wanted to give them one location to find all the information that we thought was valuable to them to be successful as a part of an ownership of this experience for their child. And so, in addition to that, what we decided is that during the summer, as Mr. Eagle mentioned, we had training for all elementary and middle school administrators. As a part of that training, we discussed the parent toolkit. In particular, the collaborative component with our PTAs. During the May meeting, I was invited to join the Hampton PTA Council and all the PTA Presidents at their August meeting. During that time, I had an opportunity to talk to them about the parent toolkit, shared with them the resource, answered some questions, and asked them to collaborate with us and all administrators to focus our back-to-school nights in September on digital citizenship. And so the PTA Council and the PTA Presidents agreed to do that, and they've partnered with us, the administrators at elementary and middle school, to focus on that digital citizenship piece in the back-to-school nights. So, as a part as well, moving forward for our principals and all of our teachers, we decided it was important to develop a digital citizenship lesson plan. So Jennifer Humble, Assistant Principal at Cary Elementary, and Travis Humble, her husband, at Langley Elementary, took the time this summer to develop and create the lesson plan in PowerPoint that was used by all fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade teachers across the division to start their students' understanding of what digital citizenship was. And so that was a positive step forward. As we're moving forward, Dr. Cagiano mentioned focus groups that we're going to be having moving forward. One of the goals we want to do is develop an open-house program for all of our rising fifth-grade parents for the spring of 2015 to allow them to prepare and get some of the information we need so that the rollout goes smoothly in the fall of 2015. And also, it'll be used for middle school parents moving into the division or the district to give them an opportunity to see what the expectations are for students and the program that we have currently running. All right? And now I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Grobel.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler, Dr. Shufflett, members of the board. Good evening. The one-to-one professional learning plans, our journey started last year, and it has not stopped. We have been nonstop. Teachers, administrators, attended training sessions this summer. We focused on the importance of digital citizenship, how classroom management differs when you have an iPad, how the creation, the production aspect of the iPad, and also content creation and integration. During that time, we found that one of the very, very best strategies is teachers collaborating and learning from each other. Our curriculum department, they are continuously out in the schools, taking, recreating lessons to take full advantage of the iPad. The coaches, interventionists, they are coming up and modeling ways to integrate this technology. And our instructional technology team is creating how-to videos, and they're also meeting with our teachers individually to personalize that learning. On November 12th, at Lindsay Middle School, we will be holding one of More to Come iPad Focus Groups. This is going to give our teachers an opportunity to, to exchange ideas, discuss, discuss concerns, and share best practices. We're going to collaborate district-wide. One of the great things about the iPad is that it allows us to create content. As Dr. Cagiano stated earlier, iTunes U, when you think of iTunes, you normally think of music. However, iTunes University is going to allow us to create complete courses and resources. The Virginia Department of Education iTunes Link has Virginia Studies, SOL content, and a lot of references and resource manuals. We already have teachers in Hampton that are creating their own unit of study. These units of study will allow the students to have their classwork on the iPad for instruction, remediation, and enrichment. We're very excited that this week we announced the I Understand Film Festival. This is going to spotlight teachers and their students and their creative skills. They will be spotlighting the best practices in their classrooms. And then we will use these videos to, as a model, to focus in on ways to enhance our instruction. As we go out into the iPad classrooms, it's really amazing and inspiring to see teachers transforming the way that they're teaching and students being creators of what they're learning. And I think, who can say it better than our teachers?
The kids get very excited about technology. That's their world that they live in, and so they are very excited to share their responses in a way that they really connect to. So I think it has caused an excitement in the classroom where instead of just the typical raise your hand and answer a question, now they're able to respond using the technology and sharing their responses with their classmates very easily.
The iPads have been a great resource with regards to elevating the rigor and depth of our lessons. The technology department provided training on iMovie, which we were able to incorporate with our students by making commercials during a propaganda unit. Students have really embraced the use of the iPads and often spontaneously give me ideas on how to use them. They can take pictures of experiments or projects to document their experiences and use as a resource for data collection.
I mean, it makes, it makes the job easier, because now they are thinking about the work throughout the day. They have a tool in their hand that helps them. They're always going in, and they're working on assignments. And then what happens, like I said, with the email, they're emailing me constant.
Okay, so as far as the next steps go, again, we are continuing to work with Apple. We're, you know, one of maybe a dozen or so jurisdictions across the country that are as far ahead as we are, I think. We're going to continue to monitor our networks and just, again, make sure that we have the bandwidth and the infrastructure to support the literally thousands and thousands of students that are, that are now on the network. We're also in the process of developing this thing we're calling a Digital Driver's License. Really excited about that. It was actually Jennifer Lockett's idea, but that's coming together to develop a system where we can provide students sort of a, a certificate, if you will, to have broad access to the internet. And then if you could, if you go someplace you shouldn't go, you get your license revoked, and it kind of gets us out of the constantly trying to block everything mode. And then we are, of course, again, beginning the deployment of the high school iPad program pilots. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Cagiano.
Thanks, Mr. Eagle. One of the things that came about as a result of the work of the Steering Committee, when we looked at research and best practices, was just checking in with stakeholders throughout the process. So we're beginning that process here in Hampton City Schools at the end of the first quarter, as we roll out the 7,000 devices in grades five through eight. And so it's kind of a twofold process. First, we'll be meeting with each middle school and pre-K through eight school. So members of the work team will show up. We'll have one person meeting with parents, one person meeting with students, and one person meeting with staff. We'll do that for each middle school and pre-K through eight school. And then at select, select locations around the city for elementary schools, we'll also be meeting with those three groups of stakeholders. One of the things about the Apple ID is we have kind of a captive audience, if you will, of thousands of parent email addresses. And so we also plan to seek feedback from parents through a method of deploying the electronic survey. Part of that is just going to be checking in to see how the first quarter has gone. But again, as I mentioned earlier, the other part of that is, is what types of activities are our parents interested in from a professional learning standpoint. For future updates, we do look forward to sharing some additional information, particularly getting fun of our, some of our students in front of you, as well as some of our teachers, to share some of those best practices and creative uses of the iPad. If Dr. Cooper would, if you would please press the play, we just wanted to bring a brief clip with us this evening to share. That does conclude our presentation. At this time, we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano. And for the rest of the staff, Mr. Holleran, Mr. Eagle, and Ms. Grobel, we appreciate very much the update and all the information that you all shared with us. Are there questions or comments from other board members? Mr. Harper?
Dr. Cagiano.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to report on all the good aspects of the iPad initiative. But this is the age of the social media, and these are in the hands of our children. Are there any negative, is there any negative feedback?
That's a loaded question, Mr. Harper. That's a loaded question.
Loaded?
Yes, sir, there are. You know, some of it, and, and Mr. Eagle spoke to it earlier, with a digital citizenship standpoint. For example, we expect next, actually tomorrow morning, we're meeting with middle school principals to seek some feedback. And one of the, the hot topics that we expect to talk about is the i-Messaging piece. And so, you know, when you look at the internet and you look at initiatives, sometimes our students will be sitting in class, and they might not have the volume down, and you hear the ding-ding, and maybe mom is messaging, or a friend down the hall is messaging. And so some principals want to, and they've done this in other divisions, just remove that app altogether. Our approach as a work team has been, you know, our boys and girls are very, very smart, and if we remove the app, what they'll do is perhaps download another app that will do the same thing. So we've really been preaching the digital citizenship piece. Back to your point, and Mr. Holleran's group, someone have addressed this as far as the subcommittee, we did receive, you know, some feedback from parents that while our network does have a filter in place to keep students from going to certain sites when they go to home and perhaps are on a wireless network at a friend's house, that's where we've been, you know, working to help educate parents as well as, as just how to be mindful, because really, you do have the world at your fingertips. You're right.
Thanks, sir.
Sure thing.
Other comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this initiative is just going to be a huge asset to Hampton City Schools. I, I think it's just going to be a great tool for getting the achievement way up there. And I've sat in many classrooms and seen how it really transforms the learning and how engaged the students are. So I'm very excited about it. I believe you said there were 7,000 iPads went out? That's just crazy to think you all have done this. So that's very impressive. I was, I do have a few questions, because I know not everything can just start perfect. One was, has it been deployed to all the fifth-through-eighth graders now? You said something about 95%, or are they all out?
Yes. Mr. Eagle, can you speak to the, the Google document that we have to, to kind of track those stats throughout the first quarter?
Yeah, again, different schools approach this differently. And, you know, some schools deployed that actually handed the devices to the students in homeroom class, and some they did it like an open-house type situation. And the Apple ID is really pivotal to make all this work. And so there's cases where some schools have said, until we get the Apple ID straight, we're not giving you the device. And with, you know, we're not moving forward with that, that, the technical side of the program. And some schools have said, well, we'll work that out. We'll give you the device, but we still know that we need to get that resolved. So, like I said, we're very close to having all of that worked out, but it's just, it's going to take time.
So there are, there are a handful of schools, schools out there now that still don't have their devices out?
Yes, yes.
That's what I was wondering. And, um... Yeah, like you were talking about all the tools that, that it's not just a device, it's not just a tool, you know, it really needs to transform the classroom. And I've seen in those workshops where there's that SAMR model, where you don't just, you know, just replace it and read the book on here instead of a textbook. You actually need to use it as a way to transform the classroom. Is there some way you're monitoring that or, or measuring that we're actually using it that way versus they're just out there?
I think at this point, like I said, we've been going around to all of the classrooms, working with the teachers, trying to transform them in this. We've been working with our administrators, and the principals have been modeling and going throughout the classrooms looking at this. As we continue on, we will have to come up, we will have surveys, our focus user groups, that's one of the main purposes of those, is to bring all of these teachers together to find out what their concerns are, what we need to do, how we can focus in to make sure it is making a difference in student achievement. And we don't want it just to, if you can do it on pencil and paper, that's not the purpose. We need to make sure that you're transforming the learning, that it's something that you could not do unless you had the device.
Exactly, exactly. So as well make sure we see that, and you know, it's not going to be all of a sudden, but it'd be nice to make sure we know that we see that growth, you know, as we do it.
And, and right now, we really are in our infancy stage.
Yeah.
So it's, it's starting, and that is a learning process for all of us. And so teachers, like I said, it's not we're saying that you do every single lesson with the iPads. We're working through that, and you use the device or the tool to, for the best purposes. So if you can find a purpose to use that, I mean, books, for instance, you can make those really books come alive.
Right.
You see a program called Educreation where teachers are being able to actually film what the students are doing. If there's a math problem, they can actually record that math problem. How are you teaching that? Teach it to one another. Students are taking pictures of homework to take home, to reinvent that, to reinforce what they're doing. So we will continue that as we continue this journey.
And I know there's been a concern, even about not having Wi-Fi at home and that kind of thing, but it, from what I've seen, everything can be downloaded in the classroom, and they don't need Wi-Fi at home in order to...
That's correct. That's correct. And that's one of the discussions we've had with teachers at our training, is what do you do? And most of, all of the things that we have, you can download it, you work at home, and then when you come back to school and you connect to the Wi-Fi, it will upload to the, you know, the system.
And I think it would be valuable if they're like, had video of the teacher or whatever, with whatever they're learning, the parent can actually see it at the same time and, and help them.
I, I was at Cooper Elementary School, and they, in their tech lab, and they were shooting rockets, and it was so quiet. And I said, what's going on? And you walked in there, and the kids had their iPads, and they were all filming and talking about what was happening. And then they went back to their groups, and they were re-watching that and learning from that. So it was very powerful.
Yeah, I think that could really help with parental engagement, and the kid actually might show you what they're doing for a change and talk to you. I had a couple of infrastructure questions. Just have you, it's just so many iPads at one time. Have you had any issues so far, like the network overloading, or I don't know all the right wording for that, but...
There's been times when things get congested, just like any highway, but we haven't had any, anything where it was like a showstopper. I would say probably the biggest issue we had was when Apple released iOS 8.1. And they just put it out there, and everybody starts to download it at the same time, and it's a, you know, one and a half gig file. Yeah, it's, we told Apple, don't do that.
So teachers aren't like in the middle of their class, and all of a sudden, nobody's stuff is working, and...
Right.
Yes, every day.
We can talk to her.
To make sure, yeah, because we need to make sure that isn't happening, because that could be distracting. But, um, all right, I think, oh, one last thing, I'm sorry. One nice thing I'd like to see going forward is, as you were talking about building curriculum and building that kind of stuff, is really, how can we start saving a little bit of money too with textbooks and stuff like that, with being able to build our own things, use resources on the web? So I'm hoping for next steps, maybe future, to start looking at some of that would be cool.
Certainly. And iTunes University is a great platform for that.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Samuels?
I know, Dr. Cagiano, you and I have had conversation also with John Eagle regarding the iPad initiative. And you mentioned that there are a few parents who have requested to bring their own devices to school. Do you know how many parents have requested that? Do you know how many parents have requested that, John?
I'm sorry, to...
To bring their own devices to school?
I've only had one family so far.
Only one family so far?
Yes.
Okay, my second question in regards to that, I know you indicated that there's going to be some sort of workshop for teachers. What about those teachers that are, I would say, more seasoned, mature teachers, who are kind of hesitant of technology? How, how are you going to reach out to those individuals who are more mature, who would like to have paper and pen? And so, how are you going to reach out to those more mature, seasoned workers?
Well, I think part of that goes back to Mrs. Smith's question that Mrs. Grobel answered, and that's, how do you kind of monitor? And I think, you know, as we're growing the initiative, growing the program, and I mentioned earlier about the importance of professional learning, it's not only with our teachers, but with our administrators as well. And so, the opportunity to provide teachers feedback. And I think with the electronic survey piece, it'll be interesting when we meet, in addition to the meeting with the teachers, to hear feedback about the pilot. One of the creative things, and again, based on the research, instead of just going to folks and who would like to participate in the pilot, the steering committee was clear as far as we're looking for folks who are expert users and believe they're expert users, and we're looking for folks on the other end of the spectrum. So I think, Mr. Samuels, to answer your question, is hearing from those teachers and meeting with those teachers and saying, what is it that we could do to ease your pain, so to speak, and, and offer, again, just like kids, differentiated opportunities for professional learning.
Okay, my third and final question. With the iPad, there's a cost in reference to the insurance that parents have to pay, $40 fee. If a parent have multiple students enrolled in middle school or fifth grade, they're having to pay multiple $40, and that could add up. What option is available to these, to parents with two, three, or even four? As you know, it's going to go on later to high school, where parents have four or five students enrolled in Hampton City School. Is there an option for those parents to have a lower payment because they have multiple devices?
Yes, you know, the insurance, and with the $40 insurance, let's say if you purchased that at the beginning of the year, and primarily for a broken screen, for example, and that would, we'd allow you to replace that device, we would replace that device for you. One of the things, we meet weekly as a work team, in fact, that was a topic of discussion today, and we talked about the opportunity for parents in that very situation that you just mentioned, to say, you know what, maybe we prorate, and maybe there's a multifamily discount, so to speak, so that parents with, with three children, perhaps, maybe they pay $50 instead of $40. We're confident that we can, we can get that insurance price down. The other thing is, you know, we are self-insured, and so we're monitoring. We haven't had a whole lot of claims to date, which means similar to health insurance premium for staff, that we're somewhat healthy there. And so, if we fast forward to next year, I mean, who knows? If the bank is that healthy, that maybe those folks who are in it currently, current fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders even receive a reduced premium for the upcoming year. Or if we don't have many claims, maybe it's just those new coming into the program, rising fifth graders, where we have the opportunity for insurance, and the others are grandfathered, so to speak. So a lot of it will depend on, here we are at the end of the first quarter, minimal claims, we'll see and assess, that reassess each quarter, but I'm confident that we can do something to accommodate parents who have more than one child in the program, looking ahead to next school year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Henry?
I was about to take exception to my colleague's comment about the mature set, since I'm definitely in that camp. But all it takes is for a six-year-old to explain stuff to you, and that you get, you understand it real fast. I have a couple of those at home. The advantage of the pilot last year is that you have a cadre of teachers with experience. I'm assuming that we're, that we're continuing to use a train-the-trainer kind of model along with collaboration within the schools, but since those, those teachers who participated last year, you have already a group of people with experience, and they went through the pitfalls or the whatevers, and, and they're really your best resource for, for helping other teachers understand what's going on now. Am I correct in that?
Yes, and two things we shared tonight speak to that. One would be that circuit user group, where folks have already been signing up. I think that was just released today, just an opportunity to get around the table and collaborate. How are you using the device here, so I'm using it with this particular app?
So if your mature, if the mature group has learned how to do a chat room, they can get on and chat with the other teachers who, who are a little more experienced?
They could. The other thing is, what Ms. Grobel didn't mention, that will be in the flyer, is that the financial incentive attached to the iTunes Film Festival through the use of professional development funds and Title II. And so, we're anticipating quite a bit of submissions, and so we're going to take those submissions, and it's, it's right there in fine print, that even if you don't win the grand prize, that we may still use your submission for PD purposes. So that's part of kind of our own teacher tube, if you will, Hampton City Schools, Best and Bright is creating videos to share with one another, and using that for PD purposes as well.
Okay, I was happy to hear that you said, all four high schools will be piloting this, this year. Is that correct?
Mr. Eagle, would you like to speak to the rollout?
Yes, I'm sorry, the, we are doing, I think it's 17 classes at Hampton, or excuse me, Beth Elkhartan and 27 at Hampton and Phoebus. And again, that has to do with the Backpack Initiative and the supplemental pilot we're getting from the state.
Right, but that's, that's a teacher base within those schools.
Yes.
Where those teachers now have a colleague, so down the hall, who's experiencing this, and can go through with it now. So the, the piloting approach gives the whole high school a lot of confidence for the next, for the next go-round. And of course, the high school kids are already on board. The problem for the teachers is to catch up.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one final question.
Yes, Mr. Samuels?
How often will the iPads be replenished or be replaced per child, once they matriculate?
We're looking at four years. The business plan is looking at a four-year schedule.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I think that wraps up all the questions for now.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much for your report tonight. Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Our next report is an update on our Hampton City Schools Social Studies curriculum. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening. Mrs. Dietz, curriculum leader for Social Studies, will be taking the podium, and I will be serving as her support system.
Good evening, Ms. Dietz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, distinguished members of the board, and Dr. Shiflett. It's my pleasure this evening to be representing my very capable team that includes my two teacher specialists that are here with me. I have, and they can raise their hand, I've got Chuck Baumgartner, and then Beth Leatherwood. And also, I have on my team Kim Weaver, who's my Curriculum Integration Technology teacher, that's a big mouthful, and Michaela York, my Administrative Support Specialist. I'm very pleased to report that our Social Studies scores this year have continued to be very robust. And in keeping with this, these are some of the strategies that we want to continue to use. The first of all is to make sure that we continue to build capacity for effective instruction and intervention in our teachers, because they are the ones that, if they're capable, then our students are going to do well, and our Social Studies teachers are doing a great job. We're also going to continuously monitor our students' academic progress, because we want to know what they know, what they've mastered, in order for us to be able to provide them the resources that they need in order to, to be successful. We're also going to continue to increase the rigor of our Common Assessments to match the heightened rigor of the SOL test, because even though we don't have technology-enhanced items in Social Studies, they are very rigorous. They have included many passages, historical passages, that students must be able to interpret, analyze, in order to answer questions. There's very complex graphs, charts, that students must be able to interpret in order to do their best on the SOL test. So we're constantly monitoring those tests, taking them apart, and then redoing them. We're also going to continue emphasis on some of those strategies that I know that you've heard me talk about, that have really netted us some success, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later. And of course, as you heard with the iPad Initiative, we, we are very committed to focusing on effective use of technology, and in fact, we're putting that into our curriculum, so that teachers have some resources that they can use. Some very specific ways that we're going to continue building capacity for effective instruction is to make sure that we continue to work with collaborative learning teams at schools, so that we do build that capacity for effective instruction at the classroom level. Also, we are going to continue doing our Just in Time workshops by grade level. Those have been very successful, because we analyze our data, we look to see what, what is low historically, and then we offer resources for teachers to use right before they enter into that nine weeks. Another thing that we're also doing is differentiation of instruction, and we have created some interactive SOL review kits for teachers to use, that they can have at their fingertips for use during the intervention block. And we've created almost one for every SOL. Another thing that we know that our parents are greatest allies, and what we've done is, we've developed some SOL Parent Review Cards that go home every nine weeks with students. In fact, they've gotten their first installment that went home with them to back-to-school night, and that way, parents can help at home. They've got an SOL-type question, and then the answers are on the back, which I think parents find very helpful. Of course, we know that we must monitor student progress, because we need to know where they are, because at the beginning of the year, they may not, they probably are not where they need to be. But by looking at that, at their scores, by way of interactive achievement, where we have our benchmarks on there, we, we monitor the data, we, we make sure that we provide the resources that they need. We also have our pre- and our post-assessments that measure student academic growth over time, and these are also on interactive achievement. And what is wonderful about interactive achievement is that you can get results as soon as, as the student takes it, you know exactly how your students are doing. We've also created some Power Quiz Common Assessments, because we know that our teachers need non-secure items to practice with before the students take the benchmark assessments. And by giving those assessments, it gets them ready, not just for the benchmark assessment, but, but for the SOL test as well. We don't want to forget the student, because students need to take responsibility for their learning. They need to know what SOLs they maybe need help with, and then to be able to come up with a plan of study. And they can use those SOL Parent Review Cards, those cards, to practice with, maybe they're with a fellow student, or maybe on the bus, and this way, they can help, you know, the, the teacher will not need to work so hard, and the student needs to have a responsibility in that. Some of the high-yield strategies that we've used in the past, and which have, have really gotten us some really good scores, are visual mapping, and when students use that regularly, they commit to memory where continents, oceans, geographic features are. And this is something that they're tested on, on the SOL test, and it, it hits the geography. Chronology links is another thing that we have used very successfully, because it helps with the history. Students are able to understand cause-and-effect relationships as a result of it, and they're also able to sequence historical events and form those mental timelines. And there's a lot of timelines on the SOL test. SQ3R was another one that we've chosen, because for its potential, not just, for its potential to impact reading comprehension. And of course, we know that reading comprehension is vital for not just, you know, reading, but for every subject. We've also embedded Project Citizen and Virginia rules in the Grade A curriculum, which is civics. And what that helps our students do, it helps them to use, to research real-life problems in their, in their community, come up with a solution, and then propose a solution to city officials. So with that, they're, that's an authentic assessment, and they're using not just their social studies skills, but they're using language, they have to be able to write, they have to be able to support their point of view, so that's very critical. What's new this year, we've got a lot of things that are new. As you've probably heard, the SOL tests in Grade III, VI, and VII have been eliminated. As a result, the state has asked us to replace them with some performance assessments, and that's what we're working on. Those performance assessments are not going to be in SOL format, they're, and that's what, that's what we are going to really focus on this year. We're excited about the possibilities, because it'll give us, give the teachers and students a chance to work on some, some different types of projects and things that they've not had a chance to work on in the past. Another thing that we're working on is iPad Professional Development. We've already done a few of those, that specifically focus on Social Studies content. With, with the iPad and with the technology, we're also looking at beginning a development, a flipped classroom library of resources that we can use with, within the classroom to give teachers the opportunity to maybe use, do the content at home, and then come back in the classroom and maybe do some of those other activities where they, they work, interact with the content. Another thing that we've done is, we've also secured funding from the Mariners Museum. We've gotten field trips for Grade VI at Lindsay Middle School, and we're really excited about that. We've also gotten renewal of the BLIS grant, which will help us build literacy in Social Another thing that we've done is, we're working on different professional development opportunities, working with primary source documents. And then the last thing that we've done is, we've just recently piloted the My Day in Court program with Keketan High School students, and it's very, we're excited, because we collaborated with city officials, with the civic clubs, and the court system. So we're excited about that. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz. Are there comments or questions from board members? Mr. Samuels?
I have one question, Ms. Dietz.
Yes.
Actually, two questions. You indicated that there is a BLIS grant. Do you know how much the grant is, and is it a revolving grant?
It, we had it last year. It's, it focuses on Grade III and V teachers.
Okay.
And it's in collaboration with ODU, and I believe it's about $75,000. And what we're doing is, we're not, they're working with, it's really exciting, because we have about slots for about 15 teachers in Hampton City Schools, and then we're also, they're also working with teachers from Norfolk. So it gives them the opportunity to collaborate and get new ideas. This is the second year that we've done it, and teachers who have participated in it have reported that their scores have not only risen in Social Studies, but in reading as well, because it targets nonfiction reading.
Okay.
So we're excited about that.
My second question.
Yes, sir.
In the first round of benchmarks, Social Studies Benchmark, how did the student perform, and where do you believe we are trending at the moment?
In the, do you mean in the, in the spring?
Yes.
In, in spring. What we did was, as a whole, when you average all the way, the testing grades, grades III all the way up through grade 11, we scored at 80 percent, pass. So I think we did a good job. Of course, there's room to grow, and that's where we're looking to make sure that we grow as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Or Ms. Dietz? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Dietz.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dr. Shiflett?
Our next report is an overview of our summer improvement projects, and that will be done by... be done by Mr. Tom Sawyer.
Since we are having what looks like a little bit of technical difficulty here, if there's no objection, we will stand in recess for five minutes. Okay. I think we've worked through our technical issues, and we are ready to move on with our next presentation. So Dr. Shiflett, if you'd like to make our introductions.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. And before I do that, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Donnie Tuck, who's in the audience this evening, and to say a special thanks to you and other council members for helping to support our one-to-one initiatives. Thank you for being here tonight. So our next report is our summer capital improvement plans, and will be done by Mr. Tom Sawyer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson. How are you this evening?
Great.
We apologize for the technical difficulty, but we'll move ahead and hopefully present some good news that took place this summer. But good evening to the rest of the board members, and Mr. Samuels, welcome to Hampton City Schools. It's our first opportunity publicly to welcome you, and look forward to a successful tenure and relationship. This evening, again, it's my privilege, as always, to present to you the summer capital improvement projects that occurred during the summer. We've selected a variety of projects, many of them took place, literally thousands, not all of them qualified for capital improvement status, but there were literally thousands of work orders and projects that took place. We're going to begin this evening with a very significant project that took place at two schools, at Tucker-Caps and Phillips Elementary, and that was window replacement. This was generated or initiated in part by staff request, but also, that was validated by an engineering study conducted about a year and a half ago by architectural firm, RRMM. And we undertook a program to literally replace every window in the entire building. As you can imagine, in 10 weeks, that was quite a challenge, and of course, impacted every classroom, every office, every space in the building. We were fortunate to have a good contractor, we came in on time, and as you see in a couple of slides, it's made a huge difference in the appearance and a number of other improvements. This is, and I apologize for the lighting, it's a bit dim. Carolyn, we want dim lighting. This is Tucker-Caps Elementary. Tucker-Caps and Phillips have the same footprint, they're basically the same school as far as the construction, and so you have a brief look at the breezeway, and then the sidewall of the 100 wing. At Phillips, we gave you a before and after, and you can see a dramatic difference. The slide on the left is original construction, aluminum frame, single-pane windows, zero energy efficiency, aesthetically very poor, and security very suspect. So the architectural firm, which was DJG of Williamsburg, worked with us, and we worked with the schools and the stakeholders, and the one on the right is the design that we ultimately selected. Moving on to our second project, we've been at Armstrong School a number of years. As you know, it's built in 1922, so it is our oldest school, and we've been doing some classroom renovations. This summer, we moved up to the third floor, and you can see the variety of construction materials on the left that was representative of the classrooms on, actually, the second and the third floor. We have completed the second floor, so we moved to the third floor. On the right, you'll see the finished product, which includes a permethium board and new energy-efficient lighting. Moving on to Bethel High School, this is another ambitious program. We replaced probably 60% to 65% of the air conditioning in all the classrooms at Bethel High School, and again, that took the entire summer. And we ran into a couple of challenges. This particular photo, which really doesn't demonstrate much of a change, and one on the left was the original equipment, one on the right would be some new equipment. But this next slide shows some of the vast improvements. The slide on the left, actually, is a filtration system. The school built in about 1967, had original piping, which meant it had original scaling, original sludge, variety of materials in the piping system, which all affects the efficiency and operation and life of our equipment. So as a part of this project, we actually literally filtered the entire building, and every drop of water went through those pipes. And the second improvement was the installation of a rooftop fresh-air intake system. Before, this school relied on what we call gravity vents, which is basically air rising. This is motorized, very energy-efficient, it helps address humidity and moisture, and it provides a fresh air exchange, and it meets all the ASHRAI standards. So great improvement at Bethel High School. As we move on to Kiketan High School, that's probably recognized as our premier high school for arts and activities, and dances, and music, and so forth. And up until this year, we always had to use the same chiller which operates the entire building. So the chiller which provides cooling was about 400 and 450 tons, I believe, to operate. So even though we only operated the auditorium, we essentially had to cool the entire building. So with this installation this summer, we have a separate air conditioning and much more efficient, and so far, so good. So we're very happy about that addition. We did some additional HVAC improvements at a variety of schools. These are cooling towers, which were integral part of our cooling systems in some secondary schools, and one of the notable differences, these are made out of stainless steel, and so the life expectancy is significant, up into 30, 35 years. We're getting some feedback somewhere. I don't know where it's coming. But we did the cooling tower replacements at, as you can see, at Kiketan, Spratley, and Restroom improvements, which I credit our superintendent for this initiative, we've been, for the last couple of years, we've been going through the division, and you can see the restroom on the left, as opposed to the renovated restroom on the right. And if you should visit any of our high schools, or actually, middle schools, you'll see these becoming more and more common. We are now moving to the elementary schools to continue these improvements, and we decided to basically go first class. These schools are going to be there for many years to come, and one welcome change is the students recognize the improvements, and we're not experiencing vandalism. And so the life expectancy and just the general upkeep seem to be a positive. Hampton High School, more air conditioning work. If you recall, last year, we did the entire second floor at Hampton High School, did about 30 to 35 units. So this summer, even though we were pressed for time, we were able to put in about 16 units, excuse me, in the first four classrooms. The biggest difference, other than the obvious efficiencies to gain, the unit on the left is a, what we call, horizontal unit, which takes up at least nine feet of classroom space. The vertical unit on the right is probably 60% less than the floor space. It provides a little more floor space for the classroom activities, and actually, the air supply, which is at the top, is opposed to a waste level, is much more efficient, and you get much better coverage in the classroom. This slide disappeared. Okay? Invisible ink, maybe. But if you recall, in February this year, a tornado struck the operations and maintenance center in Fox Hill, and basically destroyed a good 30% of the building, which unfortunately was the administrative portion of the building. So a decision was made rather quickly that we occupy the Merrimack, former Merrimack Elementary School, which we did. And since moving into there, wow, this is not good, we have renovated a number of rooms over there to accommodate the professional learning staff, and so far, we've got a partnership, we're in one big sandbox, and we're working rather well. And let's see. Wow, I think the gremlins are at work. So I apologize. What do you think, John? Okay, well...
All right, Mr. Sawyer, we have gremlins in the audience tonight, so just go on and talk to us about it.
I can't give you a visual, but I can, oh, man, I can give you a verbal, I can't give you the visual. But each year, we go through gymnasiums at our secondary schools, and we refinish gym floors and re-striping where it's required. The centerpiece of this presentation was going to be the Hampton Employee Health and Wellness Center, and I apologize, I have no idea where the photos went. But I'm going to say upfront that even though I'm here describing and sharing the wellness center, there was a lot of work that took place before any bricks and mortar. And whether it was our board endorsing this plan, our superintendent spearheading it, our school board attorney doing the legal stuff, and our business office, and our human resources, there was a lot of people involved before we ever got to the bricks and mortar. Oh, thank you, John, there we go. Can you control that, John? The photo on the, the large photo on the right is a before and after of the entrance foyer. We replaced the, what we call, storefront glass construction with energy-efficient glass. The doors are oversized to facilitate entry in and out without getting caught in the middle. Of course, a new floor, and new paint job, new lighting. We renovated and provided ADA-accessible restrooms, and on the right, you'll see a typical exam room. I believe we have up to five exam rooms, if necessary, and this was pretty characteristic of what you'd see, and I would encourage anyone to go out and look at it. And this is before and after, it's pretty dramatic. When we entered the building, back in May, I guess, the building came with this old fireplace, and that's pretty much it. And that was designated as our waiting room, and so we had some very, very skilled people in getting involved as far as design and actually craftsmanship. So the photo on the right, which in the background is a fish aquarium, and on the right is a completely reconstructed fireplace and mantel. And I will say that that work was done by our own in-house staff. The design work basically was done by our project manager, who was Tina Zanders, and we actually had an electrician, who is a part-time carpenter, hand-build that mantel that goes around the fireplace. If you have not seen it, I assure you, it's worth seeing, it's most impressive. So we feel like the waiting room, we wanted to create a welcoming environment, ease some tensions, and we hope the employees enjoy it. We've got some random shots of our employees, all of them are HCS operation and maintenance employees, and we had just over 60 days to accomplish this task, and we don't work Fridays. So, and as you know, you know, we do more with less, like every department in the school system, but I can stand before you, said this would not have been done, I don't believe you could have had this happen with a general contractor, honestly, I don't. And had it been done, the costs would have been astronomical. But our staff, all the men and women, it was just phenomenal what they did to make the transformation for this wellness center. And here's another shot of the carpenters, the plumbers, electricians doing their work in preparation for the grand opening. This next slide is some of the staff, and we're going to say a few words about Marathon Health, which actually manages the healthcare facility for us. We could not have asked for a better management company. I'm sure Ms. Ruth and Ms. Scott probably worked closer than I did, but just from my part, they were outstanding. Also, we should recognize Mr. Greg Snow with Wells Fargo, who was a consultant. Again, all these people contributed. Our maintenance folks, the operation, were kind of doing the bricks and mortar, but it wouldn't have happened in the front or the end without the administrative team that we have. So we're very thrilled to have them in this center as well, so. That pretty much concludes the presentation. Again, we just took a sampling of what took place this summer. We hope it benefits, you know, the staff, students, and the community as well. So if you have questions...
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Are there comments or questions from board members? Mr. Samuels?
I just have one quick question, Tom. Do you know what's the estimated cost for the project that occurred this summer?
We originally budgeted in the neighborhood of about $100,000, which included furniture, paint, air conditioning, ceiling, floors, every construction cosmetic thing that occurred. We had IT work, and I apologize, I did not recognize the IT department, because they also participated. But that was the ballpark budget, and I don't have those numbers with me this evening, because some of the, actually, some of the invoices aren't in place yet. But we feel very comfortable with the number, and we think we got a good product for the
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Henry?
I just have to say, those air conditioning units at Bethel look amazing, because I remember being there in 1980, and I had a family of mice that lived in my air conditioning unit. So improvements everywhere, and I know the students really appreciate going into those restrooms that look like, you know, you're being treated like someone, and not going into a place that's dingy. And the custodial staff we have has always worked very hard, but it's hard to make something look good when the finish is all gone. So we really appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Anything additionally from other board members? As always, Mr. Sawyer, you and your team are busy in the summer, getting all of these projects done in such a very small and compressed period of time, and it's like we've had some really great outcomes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Our last week's... Our last report this evening is our monthly business operations and financial update.
And I promise mine will be the shortest one. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I'm here, as Dr. Shiflett said, to report to you the results of our operations as of September 30, 2014. As of that point in time, our revenues year-to-date totaled $34,512,882, and our expenditures and encumbrances totaled $38,330,275. You may notice the expenditures and encumbrances are higher than the revenue, which is not typical, but we are doing things a little differently this year. And because that does include encumbrances, that is not all actual expenditures, we have worked very hard with procurement and with our departments to try and get things encumbered up front, so that we know at the beginning of the year where we have known expenses, and to get annual needs contracts in place. So there are significantly more annual needs encumbrances in place this year, at this point in the year, than there were last year, and all of the departments have worked very hard to get there. So about, I think it says 4.2 million, is representing additional encumbrances based on annual needs. Our budget at this point is on track with our budgeted March 30 ADM of $20,000, or 20,000 students, I'm sorry. As of the fall membership report, we reported 20,085 students enrolled in the division, and as you know, we get our funding based on March ADM. So when we get the fall membership number, we look at that and revise our projections for the March ADM, which at this point, we're estimating that our enrollment will be at 19,884, which is about 116 students less than we budgeted. So because we're funded on a per-pupil basis for a significant number of our state revenues, that's going to impact us by about $600,000 if the estimate holds true. It does not take into account any changes that may come as a result of the caboose bill, the governor's budget that's introduced in December, but we have been very fortunate that some of the budget reductions that state agencies have experienced this year, we have been spared, so we have not been hit there. But we expect... But we expect to cover the shortfall with attrition. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Scott? There are being none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Shifflin?
That concludes our reports.
Okay, we will move on to the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, would you please share our public, public comment protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Okay. I will take these in the order in which I received them, and what I will do is share the name of the next speaker up. So in the interest of time, when I announce who will be the next speaker up, if you can come closer to the podium so that we can have as little time in between as possible. We'll start tonight with our first speaker, who is Joanne Tripp. And she will be followed... She will be followed by Teresa Craig.
Good evening, Ms. Mulgrew, members of the school board, and Dr. Shifflin. My name is Joanne Tripp, and I live here in Hampton. I've been a proud special ed school bus driver for Hampton City Schools since 1995. Over my 28-year career, I expected to be advancing the closer I get to retirement, which I'm 61. But with every year I work, the more I lose. Many of our incentives have, we once received, have been removed. Attendance incentives are gone. Mileage incentives are gone. We have, we've had a 25 percent decrease in our special education differential. I love the children who ride my bus, and I love my job. I used to be a happy-go-lucky school bus driver, but now I am mostly working for medical benefits. Because after insurance premiums are deducted, I am left with only $870 to live off for the rest of the month. That's for the month of September. My take-home pay for October was 960 because I received that special ed differential. I have my pay stubs if you need to see them. I am honored to transport our children 100 miles a day. And I have maintained a perfect driver's record every year. I do this because I care about our community, I care about our schools, and I care about our children. I would like someone to care about me. Thank you very much.
Our next, our next speaker is Teresa Craig, and she'll be followed by Patricia Johnson.
Let me start by saying good evening. And as for Ms. Tripp and the rest of us bus drivers, it is important that you know we do love our job. I mean, I've been here, as Ms. Tripp has, over 20 years. We're dedicated. We do our job. We know what's expected of us, and we do it. We've been asked a lot to cover other runs that have not been covered. For some of us that have been here, we don't make a lot of money. For the 20 years we've been here, it's upsetting to know that people that are being hired are making almost as much as we have been for 20 years. When I started out driving a school bus, we got paid by the runs we did. And we got our extra special ed pay. Some of you would like to know that our special ed pay has been cut from last year. We're making less on it this year. I have often asked any one of you to come join us anytime out on the bus. Get on my bus, drive with me any day. It's not an easy job. If you have difficulty driving your car on the road at 3:30, 4 o'clock, try to get on interstate, try doing it with 27 kids behind you, two's fighting, the other ones are spinning, the other ones are throwing trash. As I said, we love our jobs. I was expla, I asked what our pay scale was. Because I'm not going to take anything away from the drivers that are just now being hired. But what is our pay scale as to how long we have worked here and if the city appreciates us? Well, I was told that we are paid by how long we've had our CDL license and been driving. A lot of us were driving before we had CDL license. So where do we fit? We started out where we were, like I said, paid by the runs. Then we went to where we were paid by contract. Then we went to where we were cut again to where we were only paid for five hours a day. Over five hours, it's overtime. We were making over five hours. So they cut us back to six hours. If you make 5:45 in hours, you make five hours and 45 minutes, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Then you work eight hours on Friday. They take the 15 minutes to cover for the rest of the days. So where's your extra incentive to do those extra two hours? You're only getting paid 45 minutes extra? Because you have to make up your six hours a day. I mean, it's not fair to us, and it's not only the drivers. It's the attendants that show up every day. The supervisors that's out there on every call when we have an accident or Johnny's not being have. The lot attendants that's out there starting the buses up because they won't start. I mean, if you take a look at Mary Peake's lot, it's just like we've been cut and cut and cut and cut. I hear a lot of people talking about going to the bathrooms. We have a spy bee in Mary Peake's. One spy bee for the whole lot. Now, if you have to go to the restroom on a rainy, cold, wet, freezing day, you're lucky if the door's going to open. And some of the schools, you go in to use the bathroom, and they don't want the drivers in there to use the bathroom. A couple of years ago, a driver was even denied water. I mean, there needs to be changes. And we need to be recognized that, you know, we pick up the children in the morning. We take them to school. If we don't take them to school, nobody has a job. And how are they going to learn? But as I said, we love our job, or we would not be here. And when you remember the drivers, the attendants, the supervisors, the lot attendants, it's a whole group that need to be recognized. We like the progression of how things go and of our kids starting to learn. But in the process, are we leaving things out in order to better things? I mean, we received a letter that stated that they wanted us to sign, and I'm sure y'all have seen this, that the letter states the school board shall not be obliged to the base wage terms above unless or until sufficient funds are provided to fulfill the obligations. Well, does that mean that, yes, I'm going to get it for three months, and then the funds have failed, and I'm not going to get it the rest of the time? I mean, what exactly does that mean? Are we going to be getting this the whole year? Or, like I said, can you just give me seven days' written notice saying that we're no longer going to have that for the, the rest of the four months we have left or whatever? I don't, I don't under, we don't understand. Where do we, where do we fit in in this equation? We're the first one they see? The last one they see? Where do we fit in? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Our next speaker... I, I am going to ask that you all refrain from some of the applause because it is holding up the, the ability for us to hear, and it's, it's keeping things from flowing as, as well as they should. So it would be helpful if you all would, would keep some of that down. Our next speaker is Patricia Johnson, and following her is, I believe it's Tamika Rogers. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. I'm speaking on the impact of extra assigned duties in our building. As you well know, the day-to-day job of a teacher is more than just broadcasting content. It has become one of designing and guiding students through engaging learning opportunities. As, as educators, one of our most important responsibilities is to search out and construct meaningful educational experience that allows students to solve real-world problems and show that they have learned the big ideas, those powerful skills, and have met greed on standards of learning. Now, being assigned extra duties impact instructional time and planning time in our building, and it affects the morale. These duties can include monitoring cafeteria, hallways, meetings during designated times, allotted, meetings during designated time, allowed it to focus on planning and clerical tasks, such as inputting datas several times, several places on those data monitoring forms. Therefore, teachers are spending two to three hours after work at home and on the weekend completing their classroom tasks. In addition, we all love our job. I love the art of teaching, the science of teaching. And we're workers on the front line, in the trenches, trying to support and help students become successful and productive citizens. We can sacrifice now or pay later, but the commitment to our students and our future is unswerving. We request your continued support as we take on the, the challenge of sustaining academic support for our children amidst numerous additional demand on our time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker is Tamika Rogers, and she'll be followed by David Allen Carmichael.
Good evening. My name's Toymika Rogers. I am a Hampton City School parent, teacher, and resident. I love my job as a teacher. I love teaching at Title I schools. I feel that Hampton City School needs to apply its model to its employees every day, every member, whatever it takes. I have been teaching for almost seven years with a master's degree. And Hampton City School's pay, pay scale requires 19 years of service before I can get to $50,000 or see $5,000 more in pay. I have peers with a bachelor's degree that make more money than me, and I am struggling to support my family, and I want and deserve equal pay. I have accepted a pay cut, tax increase for the city of Hampton, and an increase in responsibility with no assistant at this time. I hear I am appreciated for everything I do, but this year, I am washing lunch tables, disinfecting my own classroom, printing and laminating at home. I am the every child, every day, whatever it takes. I take my job home, I stay after late, required to come to work before and after school hours to participate in parent-school activities and meetings. I have to be on a committee when I barely have time to meet the needs of my own family and myself. Every day, I make financial and personal sacrifices to meet the needs of the students and parents. I try to meet unreasonable deadlines for data assessments and lesson plans every week. Even though I am tired, I am stressed, and I am overwhelmed, I make my classroom a safe and welcoming place for my students every day. I go above and beyond every day without awards, recognitions, except for my parents and students. And Hampton City School gives me a good eval. I make, I want to be respected by human resources, leadership team, and administration as a college-educated professional with feelings and opinions. I want support in the classroom, and I'm hoping for a real solution to my concerns and issues. I am pleading for answers and a plan that would give me hope and a feeling of trust. In closing, I do not want to walk away feeling like I am talking, but no one is listening or cares. And I do not want to be referred to the TAC website for answers. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Our next speaker is David Carmichael, followed by Sylvia Phillips.
It's my first school board visit. Awesome. You guys have a great weight on your shoulders. I just got to say, I want to commend you and, and even the, and the people that are here voicing their, their issues today. I have just discovered recently, there's a form, it's a religious exemption form. It's application for exemption from compulsory school attendance. And there's a statement here, the application must be signed under oath by the parent and the pupil, if aged 10 or older, and notarized, et cetera. An incomplete application will not be processed. Failure to provide all the required information will result in the denial of the exemption. I've got a little written statement here. It appears to me that without authority, I've been trying to find the authority for this, someone is requiring my child and other children, that, the parents that I've talked to, is how I found out about this, to be subjected to a religious, effectively, inquisition in order for me or any parent to fulfill their absolute duties of religion, to train up our children the way they should go and to equip them for their station in life. I can find no authority for the General Assembly to do it. So therefore, they have no authority to delegate that power to a school board, its superintendent, or anybody else. This requirement for my child to pass someone outside my family's arbitrary determination is an act that is inciting a form of, it's actually a form of treason. It's a strong word, but, you know, looking it up in the dictionary and, and these relationships in family integrity, that's actually what it is. It incites a form of treason against me and other parents who act on the basis of religion. And the question is, and somebody in particular is listening, this question, by what authority do you require my unemanci, unemancipated infant to be subject to this inquisition in order for me to fulfill my obligations of nature and religion regarding my child's education? Is this requirement mandatory or voluntary for me or for my child, and by what authority? What are the consequences if I or my child don't volunteer to this form, and by what authority? Until my child reaches majority and is enfranchised into society, he's under my authority on the basis of my parenthood, notwithstanding his yet-as-developed opinions or practices of religion. Code of Virginia 57-1 decries those who use government power to lay the bait for those who would give up their opinions or practice of religion because of persecutions or inconveniences. This inquisition form is bait to foster rebellion in infants who are at a stage in life where their daily hormonal oscillations make them vulnerable to these inducements. Now, the term I'm using in infant means they're not of the age of majority, and that's a legal term. And if you know about teenagers, they get a little bit rebellious. And they get, they got passions going on that they don't use self-control much as they did even when they were 10 years old. But there's this stage here, at 10 years old, the children would have to articulate to the school board why they have this reason of religion. It's, it's really not up to them. It's up to dad, who's accountable to Almighty God for what happens between the time of their birth and the time that they step out in life to do the things that... their birth and the time that they step out in life to do the things that we've taught them to do. So here I am to cry out to this innovation. I, my, I say that it's wrong. I, as I look at it, trying to make sure I'm submitting to the proper authorities, I don't see that there's authority for the, for this requirement that my child from 10 up come to the school board to have to do a treatise on religion. So I say it's, I say it's wrong. It's an exercise of power without authority and contrary to the foundations of society and the institutions of Virginia. And then so, just to leave for somebody to communicate back to me, and I've got my actual full address here on this paper I'll turn in, "By what authority ought my child to be subjected to this? Is it voluntary or mandatory? What are the consequences?" And just, if I could in the response, not just state a code, actually say verbatim what authority requires this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. If you will share that address with the clerk, please. Thank you. Our next speaker is Sylvia Phillips, and she will be followed by Reverend Debbie Lee Bryant. Okay. Ms. Phillips?
Yes. Good evening to all of you, and welcome, our bus drivers. I am Sylvia Phillips, retired Hampton City School, retired teacher for over 30 years. I am now employed by Hampton City School Transportation Department as a part-time bus driver, athletic and field trip driver, certified CDL classroom and behind-the-wheel trainer, and many other jobs that I do not wish to talk about at this time because I'm not compensated for. I have worked for 23 years for the Hampton Transportation Department. I've seen this department go from bad to worst, for which I am not fairly compensated for. But I am not here for me. I am here for the reasons as follows. For all who are employed by the Hampton City Transportation Department, that includes all drivers, personnel, attendants, first I ask you, all of you, when was the last time you visited our present transportation facilities? That includes the aluminum lot, Mary Peet lot, bus garage, since we started this transportation, transporting K through 12 plus special education. I should ask for hands, but I won't, because we all know there are not very many. Well, I'm filled in yet on our most important standing problems in our present workplace. Aluminum lot, four supposedly temporary trailers that have turned into low-term, low-maintenance, no sight of a future facility. Mold in the vents and returns, not healthy. Potapotties, because they are not clean. One bathroom in each trailer for both men and women, not sanitary. These bathrooms are constantly being used while lounge duty is in session, while drivers are eating, meetings are in session, various classes are being held, office conferences are being held. These bathrooms are constantly being used, heard, smelled, as these activities are taking place. This is just embarrassing and unacceptable. But are we given a choice? No. No one seems to care. There's no pride in our workplace for all our employees. We ask, "When is it going to change?" Mary Peet lot, no bathrooms, drivers are not allowed in Mary Peet School Building. Instead, we have one potapotty for both men and women. No lounge for drivers' needs. Instead, we have to use our vehicles for our lounge. No paved lots with slot lines for each bus to park safely. We use fence posts for imaginary lines. We have parked, we have paved, we have packed gravel and dirt that is constantly wearing into large holes that hold water that we have to walk in to pre-trip our buses for our safe travel for our students daily. Poor lighting, which makes it difficult to see snakes, raccoons, and other rodents that are found in our parking areas. Garage, not enough bays to accommodate the number of buses in our fleet, not enough parking where our buses are in for repairs and monthly maintenance services. Fueling is a problem, not enough pumps which can cause long lines of waiting. We, we can't attract or keep bus drivers with this kind of problem. It's mentioned above along with other, other problems. Problems is our sight as we go along. We train drivers, then we lose them to our neighboring, our neighbors who have better workplace, higher pay, and better facilities, and better benefits. We are constantly being told what great jobs we as drivers are doing, but pride, the respect, the caring, the inspiration to be better at our living conditions and our lives is never in the monetary picture. What kind of morale are we to have for these kinds of conditions and inadequate pay for work well done? Where's the pay for that great job we've done, appreciating speeches we listen to at the beginning of each school year, from our top personnel who gets compensated year in and year out with raises in salary? We also live in the same city with the same cost of living increases, so why aren't we getting increased in pay as we have the same cost of living? We have nothing to look forward to, and it's just time to stop. Take a listen to what we have to look forward to. No increase in pay, inadequate workplace, no decent facilities, profane disrespect bus riders, abusive use of iPods, tablets, loud earphone music, which is sometimes offensive in language, disrespectful parents, inability to suspend students from the bus for breaking posted rules. You know, we have to have various fundraisers to acquire funds to pay for our end-of-the-year picnic of banquet, which is that great job speech we get in the beginning of the year that does not go towards the ending. We have our picnics on aluminum lot between AM and PM runs with no incentive with top administrators, other than those who given in the beginning. What would happen if we didn't have these hard-working, dedicated drivers and attendants with such a low pay and morale, using their great professional skills day in and day out to get our students to and from school safely each day?
Ma'am, if you can wrap your comments up, please.
I will. We are, we as drivers are put in harm's way, daily in, on, and off-road hazards, all kinds of weather conditions, disrespectful bus riders just to get children to and from school safely each day and not being fairly compensated for the job we do. We are constantly told by administrators, "Please just take a few moments of your time to visit our inadequate facility, ride our buses, review what I have described here tonight, and upgrade our facilities in the near future for all of us to be proud of in the near future." It is greatly appreciated and will be appreciated. In closing, I will state the fact that we presently employ 185 bus drivers, which means we are 15 short, meaning our drivers have to double-run for what they are not paid to do. We also have 68 attendants who work hard and are not compensated fairly either. A better work facility, better pay makes happy drivers who will want to come to work with pride and respect. The present conditions is just not respectable. Our roles and responsibilities are tremendous, and we are frustrated. Frustration makes, frustrated makes unsafe drivers, and we are definitely frustrated and angry with all of it. Remember, anger is just one letter from danger. Thank you for your time and patience for listening.
Our next speaker is Debbie Lee Bryant, Reverend Bryant, and she'll be followed by Susan Potter.
Chairman, Dr. Shiflett, School Board Members, Councilman Tuck. My name is Reverend Debbie Lee Bryant. I've been an aide for 14 years and a driver for one and a half years in the Transportation Department. As many of you know up there, I'm a researcher, so I'm going to give you some statistics. Why we feel we need a salary increase. Number one, the Hampton City Public School Transportation Department employs approximately 288 staff members, office staff, drivers, attendants, and mechanics. Number two, the annual route mileage, buses travel approximately 3 million miles per year, providing safe travel to the majority of the more than 20,000 students that are enrolled, not only to and from school, but on field trips, athletics, activities, the McKinley Vento Homeless Education Assistant Act program for the displaced. Drivers go to Portsmouth, Newport News, and requests have come in from Williamsburg, Norfolk, and Alawite. Number three, the number of route buses. We have a fleet of 230 buses with 161 full-time routes. 52 of them are special needs. Recommendation, all incentives are gone besides the special needs, which was cut by 25% again. We want the incentives restored and put back into the budget and not cut. Number four, our most senior driver started in 1968. 10 have been employed for more than 25 years. 45 have been employed for more than 10 years. Since the end of the last school year, we have lost over 35 employees, either due to retirement, relocation, or simply seeking better employment. Number five, on an average week, 20 drivers are out. It has gotten as high as 40 drivers out. Those routes have to be covered. There's a way of a driver shortage. You can do it in mild, moderate, severe, or desperate, and we are considered severe when we have drivers out. We are overworked, and we are underpaid. Drivers cover the routes when others are absent, and they don't get paid for it. Number six, our closest neighboring city, Newport News, Virginia, starts both drivers and attendants at a higher starting rate and offers all of them full-time positions and benefits. Recommendation, we want Hampton drivers and attendants to have full-time positions with benefits at a higher starting rate with Newport News. The ranges in Hampton, the bus drivers, the entry per hour is $10.85. It can go up to $17.25 per hour. In Hampton, the attendant, the entry hour is, per hour is $8.37. It can go up to $13.33. In Newport News, the entry for the bus driver is $11.55 an hour. It can move up to $20.12. The attendant in Newport News, the entry is $9.35 an hour. It can move up to $16.36. From the School Bus Fleet Magazine, October 2014, volume 60, number nine, pages 28 through 38, and I quote, "Among the top 100 school districts in the country, in an extended survey, the average pay for school bus drivers is $14.21 per hour on the entry level. Virginia Beach, $12.85 an hour entry. Norfolk Public Schools, $12.24 an hour entry. Henrico County Public Schools, $13.40 hour entry. Hampton Public Schools entry level for drivers and attendants is behind the national average pay by $3.36 an hour, behind locally to Newport News by $2.68 an hour, and behind across the bay to Virginia Beach by $3.71 an hour." Number seven, concerning the raises, I talked to Susie Scott. There was no raise in 2014. Last year, 2013 to 14, there was a 6% raise. Of course, 4% went to the Virginia retirement, and we got 2%. 1%, we got 2012 to 13. 1% we got 2011 and 12. Recommendation, we want a minimum of 3% with incentives put back in place. We want city council to change the formula which determines the school's budget, which includes transportation. Number eight, finally, we transport precious cargo, our children and grandchildren, your children and grandchildren, and for the majority of the time, we do it safely, even though we have to deal with all kinds of behavior, fights, abusive language by the child and some of the parents. Our lives are put in danger every day. Yes, we have been trained. We really should be getting hazard pay. So I challenge you, the school board, to review the write-ups on some of these children, their behaviors on the bus and in the car. I assure you, you would be surprised. State law says that we have to transport, but do you really know what some of these drivers have to deal with every day? We, our job, we, we do our job. We go the extra mile. We go the second and the third mile. The economy has been messed up for some time, but if city council can find money for rebuilding malls that hardly no one goes to, what value do you put on the safety and the well-being of our children? We are the first they see in the morning, outside the door. We are the last they see at the end.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you are over your time, and you do need to wrap your comments up, please.
Thank you. Of the day. So what value do you put on the children? Why do we need a salary increase? Because we have to live, and this Transportation Department deserves it. 1% just won't cut it.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Susan Potter, and she will be followed by Allison Jackson. Ms. Potter?
Thank you for the chance to speak tonight to the board and superintendent and many of you I've seen before. I learned a lot tonight. I learned a lot about things that are going on at Hampton City Schools that I've never heard of before, programs and such. So that was, it's been informative. I've taught for 32 years. This is my 32nd year teaching, and I've been in Hampton City Schools since 1997. During that time, I've been an elementary teacher, and now I'm a middle school teacher. I teach six classes. I have 127 students. In three of my classes, half of my, half of those three classes are special ed students, some of them reading at a K through second grade level. Now, my point with all this is that with lesson planning, I have to differentiate for the students that can't read as well as those that are reading on or above grade level. We've been taxed to make lesson plans that, to me, are more like screenplays that take me three hours to make. They're like a script. I would think that at this point in most of our careers, I'm an old dog, I can learn a new trick, and I can add all the technology, and I can do all of that. But are three hours of lesson plans really necessary, along with the CLT meetings, vertical team meetings, faculty meetings, before-school duty, after-school duty, and you get the picture? My husband had a stroke four years ago, and I don't get that much time with him, and I don't know how much time he even has, and I would like to have some more time and be unencumbered from unnecessary paperwork, unnecessary common assessment forms after every single test, every single test. Help us out. Help us out. You want to keep us? You want to raise morale? It's not that I'm not unhappy and wouldn't want a bigger salary. Who wouldn't? Just ease my paperwork, ease my coworkers' paperwork. We're drowning, and our morale is drowning. I see my teammates around me every day that are going out on their days off. They're interviewing elsewhere, and someone else will pick them up, especially the math teachers. And I know, I read the papers, how you're hurting for the math people. They're going to go, they're going to go to shipyard, they're going to go to other places if something is not done about the heavy load of paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potter. Our next speaker is Allison Jackson, and she will be followed by Jamie Oso.
Good evening. My name is Allison Jackson. I'm a teacher for Hampton City Schools. I've been teaching for 26 years, and through these years, I've seen many changes, good ones providing, providing positive growth and progress, and more recently, not-so-good ones causing low morale and stress for teachers. I felt the need tonight to represent my fellow coworkers and the many teachers throughout our school district. I wanted to focus on only one of the many, many stressors we have to deal with each day, and that is to have a duty-free lunch. At the beginning of the school year, we were given the news that we would not be getting a duty-free lunch. Then, we were told that we would have a duty-free Then, we were told that we would have a duty-free lunch. And then, a few days later, sorry, no duty-free lunch. Actually, there was never even an apology. The reason for this decision, we were told, was that they couldn't find anyone to be cafeteria monitors. So we are to believe that no one in the city of Hampton needs a job. That just doesn't sound right to me. I truly enjoy, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart, I enjoy my students and what I do, but to not have a little time to have to myself or with my coworkers without interruptions could really make it a tough day. Many of my friends who are not teachers have an hour break for lunch each day, and most are even allowed to leave their workplace to enjoy their lunch if they choose. Even my 16-year-old, sweet daughter, who works at a fast-food restaurant, gets a paid and required 30-minute break for dinner. All that teachers are asking is for a quiet time away from students to regroup and enjoy their lunch. It's just not, doesn't seem fair, and teachers feel that putting a duty-free lunch back into place is the least our school district could do for us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamie Oso. I hope I have that right.
That's fine. It's Oso, but that's okay. Been called worse.
Following, following Ms. Oso, Lauren Hasselquist will be up next.
Okay, thank you. Good evening to everyone. This is my 29th year with Hampton City Schools. Over the past 29 years, I've seen the school division go through many changes. Some have been good, and some have made us shake our heads. Over these past 29 years, there were a few times I've looked outside the division for employment. I was offered positions on different occasions, but after some reflection, I changed my mind and decided to stay with Hampton City Schools. I thanked the individuals for their offer, but told them I just can't jump ship, because deep down, after some more thought and reflection, I felt a sense of loyalty to the school division and decided to stay, because I truly do love Hampton City Schools. I was raised with a strong work ethic, and a person's work, their coworkers, and their mission meant something. Now, I'm feeling a bit foolish, because the division I have put my faith and loyalty in seems to not care about its employees. Many years ago, HEA fought for a much-deserved duty-free lunch for teachers. Teachers deserve a duty-free lunch, and our students deserve to have a teacher that is not stressed out. It is incomprehensible to me that the state legislature took this right away, but that is another issue. However, that does not mean it was right or just. According to information from Human Resources that we received, the following divisions have duty-free lunch: Newport News, York County, Williamsburg, James City County, Pecoson, Olive White, Gloucester, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and Chesapeake. I'm sure others do also, but you get the general idea. I have been keeping a log of my hours since last spring. During a four-week period, including working at home and weekends during schoolwork, I worked 53-point hours during the week of September 15, 52 hours the week of September 29, 50 hours during the week of October 6, and 50.5 hours during the week of October 20. The days I was in the building late, I had a lot of company. The teachers that left before us pulled suitcases of work behind them and opted to work at home. You, some of you, sat through meetings where the custodians and instructional assistants felt cut off at the knees, then gave raises to people at the top. Teachers used to get at least one hour a day or more of clerical help, which was tremendous, but no more. Now, we have morning duty, afternoon duty, and, yes, lunch duty. And that tired old excuse of there is no money, or if it's a different pot of money, isn't acceptable. Over the past 29 years, my colleagues and I have always met, talked, collaborated, and shared resources and information. But some company or group comes along and puts some letters or fancy name to it, like PLC, and thousands of dollars are spent on training, traveling, and substitute teachers while teachers are at meetings on how to have meetings. There are other examples, but I only have five minutes. Perhaps you need to reexamine where and how money is spent instead of saying it's not there. As far as duty-free lunch for teachers, perhaps you could contact the other nine divisions I mentioned and ask them how they managed to have duty-free lunch for their teachers. I hope you do the right thing and reinstate duty-free lunch for Hampton teachers sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potter. Our next speaker is Lauren Hasselquist, and she will be followed by Dan McFarland.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Schiflett, members of the board. I'm speaking this evening, I'm Lauren Hasselquist, teacher. I love my job, like everybody here. I'm speaking this evening because I'm frustrated and I'm tired. I feel the amount of work required outside of school time has become overwhelming. This is because of the continuing cuts to personnel, the increased complexity of the lesson plans, and the constant data collection, and the input of that same data into an alternate, redundant form. What I want is for me to be treated as a professional, the one that I was educated to be. I love teaching. I love tracking the progress of my students. I love making creative lessons, but in its current form, by the time I complete the lesson plans, I can't even read them. I don't want my students to be short-changed by the bureaucratic burden that has been levied on all the teachers. Keep in mind that I teach kindergarten. I can't imagine teachers in the high-stakes grades, what, how they're even surviving. My students don't deserve an exhausted teacher, and kindergarten students are already suffering due to the cutbacks of the instructional assistants. It seems more is expected of me with less support and compensation. I spend my lunchtime wiping tables and inputting data. I know you said equity raises were given to some this year, but what about the teachers' equity? Our hours of paperwork and duties have increased exponentially, yet it seems we get less and less support.
Our next speaker is Dan McFarland, and he'll be followed by Tanya Hutchinson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dan McFarland. I'm a music teacher at Basset Elementary. I'm a lifelong citizen of Hampton, a homeowner and a taxpayer, and my concerns stem from all those different roles. First, I would like to thank Chairman Mugler for bringing a volunteer group to Basset for much-needed repairs at our school, and it wasn't just a dog-and-pony show. It was really excellent. If you want something done right, get a Presbyterian. They'll do a good job. Now, the teachers are working longer hours, and they're working harder, and to deliver great instruction during budget cuts and staffing cuts, that's even worse. I mean, even when it all first happened, we gave up 1 percent of our own pay to save staff, because we knew how important that was. As a member of the association, I'm privileged to meet people from all over the state and meet in the region, and one of my colleagues in the association said that just this year, at his, at York High School, five of our teachers jumped ship from here to go to that one school. Now, they must have gone many other places, too, and I know this happens on some scale every year for many different reasons. I mean, people have all different reasons why they have to move, but that seems like a big jump, and as a resident of the city, depending on you guys to maintain a level of quality in the teaching staff that we trained, I think it's something you guys got to look into. And the poor morale stems from perception that our school board, our administration, our city council are just helpless to adequately fund us. None of us can print money. You can't, they can't, but I'd feel a lot better if I saw you guys on Wavy TV 10, speaking out and complaining about it. I mean, I'm just Joe Schmo. I'm nobody. I wasn't elected to do anything. And, you know, we need to ask why the state isn't correctly spending the proper money on it. We're, we're looking at ways of expanding the tax base here in Hampton, but nobody wants to touch certain taxes, and we keep giving people tax breaks. I'm really surprised that no locality in the state has yet decided to sue the state for not taking on their responsibility. Hmm. The Time Magazine just this week has an interesting article on how to develop a lawsuit and reverse-engineer it so that you can develop it to solve problems of the public good. If you want a copy of it, I could send it to you. The important, the importance of staff morale can stem from things like, you know, just save a little bit more money, I'm going to have to have a couple more kids every, every year in each class, and I have to teach them how to play recorder. And, well, I don't have to, it's just the best thing for them. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a huge mind process. It's not an iPad that you can punch and it does it for you. You have to actually do it yourself. They have to learn breath control, tonguing, fingering, sight-reading. All these things take a lot of individual encouragement and correction, and I don't expect them to become professional musicians, but they do need to develop mental and fine motor skills and self-discipline and a sense of tackling something that is very difficult but enjoyable. It's like sports with a, an emotional appeal. And affluent communities, kids, kids get to do this stuff all the time. In my community, my kids need it in school. And so, you know, we're trying to maintain, we are maintaining a great quality education here with rubber bands and, and tape, but I really, I really implore you guys to become more visible and vocal. Maybe you're too polite. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanya Hutchinson, and she will be followed by Herma Key.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Schiflett, and school board members. I am Tanya Hutchinson, President of the Hampton Education Association. I would first like to thank you, Dr. Schiflett, for taking the time out to address the concerns that teachers and support staff throughout the division have had. Tonight, you heard just a few stories. These stories, as well as many more, have been, I have been hearing for the past few months. We are not here to point the finger or make accusations, but we are here so that our voices get heard by more than just our superintendent. We realize that it will take more than just the school board and the city council to get legislatures to give us what we need for our schools, but it will take us all working together and sharing our stories. They need to hear the story of the custodian that is now making $26 a day and expected to support his family off of that. They need to hear the story of the instructional assistant that is now working 25 hours without benefits. They need to hear the stories of our bus drivers. They need to hear the story of the teacher that has before-duty, lunch-duty, and after-school duty, and feels like they are just tasked with more and more to do with less. We wear black tonight, some of us, for no reason but to show solidarity, and I ask that all teachers, support staff, and anyone else that is in support of public education We stand willing, and we stand able to work with you to make our vision a reality, every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Herma Key, and Herma will be followed by Joan Losi.
My name is Herma Dina Key. In my 37 years with the Hampton School System, 15 years a teacher assistant slash 27, 37 years as a Hampton School Bus Attendant slash monitor, window washer, nose wiper, tear wiper, lift operator, wheelchair operator, potty trainer, referee, consultant, cafeteria worker, nurse, substitute mother, substitute grandmother, and most of all, a whipping Then, I am a retriever. Once I put my little finger into the mouth of a child to retrieve a wet, soaking cotton-filled piece of pamper, the victim was choking, but I still had my hand. Oh, yes, I have many stories to tell, but I don't tell stories about my job. I just tell the truth, and the truth is, five minutes or five hours can't tell me or my coworkers what we do on a daily basis. I can only speak for what I see, and I see my bus driver, Ms. Sharon Banks, doing a fantastic job. She helped me out a lot. Sometimes, I just go off. I am not stressed, but I do go off. I am not here to demonstrate. I am here with my coworkers who need to express their concerns. Personally, I think the school system overlooked the fact that, together we stand, happy-paid workers will give you better benefits, probably would do better work. Being stressed out sometimes contributes to heart attacks and strokes. Teachers don't just teach. Teachers assistants don't just assist. Bus drivers don't just drive. Bus assistants don't just sit, smile, and look cute. I realize that some of management is working behind closed doors to help us, but please open those closed doors and let us know what is going on. Thank you. Separately, some of us will fail. Together, we can stand. It is not all about me or you, it is about all of us. At my tender age, on my job 37 years, please don't judge me or criticize me or my coworkers. Don't judge me by the wig I wear. It's paid for. This old gray mayor is not what I used to be. I am better, and so is my employees and my coworkers. We are experienced. Don't criticize, just sympathize. If you want to go tell something, I say it. Miracles do happen. Hug, love each other. What's love got to do with this everything? Newsflash: This week, maybe next week, maybe next month, maybe next year, the Hampton Daily Press newspaper could or should read, extra, extra, read all about it, the sometimes underpaid, overworked, overlooked Hampton School employees got just what they wanted. Can you hear me? Better benefits, more affordable benefits, more consideration, and more, 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 more money. Now, they are not so stressed. They are blessed, and finally, we can, we all can be happy, 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 all of us and even me. Herma Key, happy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Losi, Joan Losi, and she'll be followed by Vicki Prince.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Dr. Schiflett, and school board members and guests. My name is Joan Losi, and I am one of your special ed bus drivers. Last year, I was given a stipend, along with my regular pay of $135 per month. That was the top pay if you did six special ed runs. Last year, I did seven. This year, we took a cut unexpectedly and not knowing, and I now receive $101.30 per month for doing six special ed runs, top pay. This year, I do eight. This is a difference of $101 of $337 in 10 months. I spoke several years ago about the difference in a special ed driver versus a regular driver, and the three or four minutes is not long enough to go through that tonight. The cargo we carry every day are your children, your grandchildren, your nieces, your nephews, your cousins, your friends, and your neighbors. They are precious to their parents, and they are precious to us. The money that a CDL driver makes does not compare to those with a CDL driver that travels and make, and travels and carries dirt, rock... and make, and travels and carries dirt, rocks, and sand. They make more money than us carrying lives. We are the driving force that keeps Hampton City Schools. Without thus, us, there would be some mighty upset parents. We are expected to drive through rain, ice, snow, and let me add the floods. Recently, we had the floods. We had started to work in our own vehicles, driving in conditions that were unsafe, to find out that schools had been either canceled or was on a two-hour delay. We ask that you please make this call earlier and not endanger us and our vehicles out on the streets of Hampton. You guarantee us six hours' pay per day. That means AM and PM runs. Years ago, we got the six hours' pay, no matter what we drove, morning and afternoon. Now, if we are short 45 minutes, 30 minutes, 15 minutes of making our six hours, but we come back and do a midday run for you, or maybe two, we then have our pay docked that we drive for in the middle of the day, and that amount that we are short, our six hours, goes over to create our six hours' pay for the day. It seems like that the more we do, the less we get, because a driver who does not take any extra runs and may be short 15, 30, or 45 minutes will receive their six-hour pay. This shortage gets taken out. It doesn't seem fair. You give it to some, and then some of us don't make it. I totally understand why Hampton has trouble keeping drivers. How many of you go to work to the same job three times in one day? Our frie, our, we work hard to train drivers. They work a few months, they get a few paychecks, and then they quit. They take their CDLs, and they transport dirt, rocks, sand, and find jobs that make better money. Keep in mind, we carry precious lives. We are like everyone else. We work to support our families or contribute to the family income. Longevity on the job means nothing. You, you may think hiring bus drivers is easy, but it's keeping them, that's the hard part. Do you realize that a special ed driver that has a route on paper that shows that it should take her three hours to complete a run can have that drastically cut by a child getting sick, and our special ed children are very frequently absent, they have long periods of time where they have surgeries? This can cut 30 minutes from our time each day, and over a period of six weeks' recovery, we have lost quite a bit of money. I know that is not your fault, nor is it ours, but just to reflect on how our income Thank you for listening to me tonight, and thank you for my employment. I love being a bus driver. I have been a bus driver for over 30 years. I received the Dove Award two years ago. We appreciate you listening to our concerns. We would love to talk to you when we had more time, if you would let us. We welcome you to come and take a ride with us and experience the day as a bus driver. We are only asking for a paycheck that we can count on each and every month, not one that fluctuates up and down, up and down. I would like all my fellow bus drivers, the aides, our director, and our supervisors to stand. This is your Hampton City Schools Transportation Department.
Thank you, Ms. Losi. Our next speaker is Vicki Prince, and she will be followed by Marcus.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Prince, and this is my 18th year with Hampton City Schools. I'm a kindergarten part-time instructional assistant at Langley Elementary. We were told last school year that the budget cuts may change our employment status from full-time to part-time. Like so many other Hampton City School positions, we waited in hope for a positive outcome from the School Board vote. The Board had voted during previous budgets to retain the IA's full-time status, stating the importance and the value the IA's bring to the education process. After the vote to part-time my position, I submitted tac questions requesting general questions and benefits information. However, I was told, not the topic at the time, or we really can't answer now, and felt as if I was being strung along. It appeared they didn't have a plan, therefore, they were unable to answer any salary, benefit, and retirement questions I had. Unlike other positions that were in the budget cut, they had meetings and received letters. We were given a survey requesting our wishes for the next school year with a turnaround of two days. Once again, there were no guidelines and limited information to make an informed decision. No one seemed to be able to answer questions about our positions, our pay, our school location, leaving everyone to make a blind decision and hope for the best. Rather by design or not, we were kept in the dark through the whole process and still do not have answers to these questions. Nine weeks have passed in this part-time position. Not only have our benefits been taken away, we work five hours a day, no one can give us information. When I question anything about our time and pay, there is no written policy on this position. I have sent in tac questions, coworkers have emailed and phoned downtown, we are told things are up in the air, Cronus and Oracle are not working together. I heard today that they are still kinks in the policy that need to be worked out, and information is forthcoming. I questioned my existing retirement account, only to receive different responses, and I still am not for sure how I'm supposed to handle that. We started this year not knowing how the change would impact our pay. No one thought it was important to tell us about our pay or that we would be grandfather-claws for some of us, which could eliminate a lot of stress over the summer for all or prevent it some from moving to other positions. There is a lot of, sorry, there is no time to plan anything with our teachers, our team, with the lot of five hours, we walk in and immediately have to start work groups. This financial decision was made with no regard to the student or the employee. The act, the lack of information has brought unneeded stress and devalues as of us employees and human beings. I used to feel like a valid team member of the staff and carried a lot of pride and enjoyment in being a kindergarten IA. Through these actions, Hampton City School has made the IA's feel like hired help, and I can only hope that over time, I can regain that excitement and gratification I once felt as a kindergarten IA. The appearance is that Hampton, Hampton City School first made the budget decision with the plan that they would figure the rest out as it went along. They still have not figured it out, and if they have, they are unable or unwilling to communicate it with us. Kay, part-time IA's need a written policy. Thank you.
Our, our, our final speaker is Marcus Reynolds. Okay, thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time. My name is Marcus Reynolds. I'm a father of seven, five of which have either graduated or are going to Hampton City Schools. I'm also a husband to Alice Reynolds for 36 years. During the last six or seven years, she's worked for Hampton City Schools. I had a prepared speech, but you know what? After I see what I see and I hear from all these people, I see my little problem as so minute, but maybe when you hear it, you won't think so. Because it is important to transport children, my children, your children, just like they said, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, uncles, to school. It is very important. But when they get there, don't you want your school to be clean? Do you not want your school to be clean? Would you like to walk through, through the halls and see spills and trash, and go into the bathroom and have it stink like puke? Is that what you want? I'm surprised that no one from GCA was here to give a report on the standing of the custodial aspect of the transfer of that contract. I'm shocked. Where's GCA? Anybody here from GCA? Why not? Why aren't they giving a report here now? They've been in business with Hampton City Schools for three months, cleaning the schools, correct? Right? My wife, when I looked up there and I seen that bathroom at Kickitane High School changed from what my wife used to clean to the way you guys changed it, I said, wow, all right. When I first came in here, I said, this is great. We got kids here, everybody's getting awards and achievements and... Then I thought to myself, I said to myself, my wife has been employed for Hampton City Schools as a custodian for seven years, but she was terminated on July 7th or transferred to GCA. It says on the form there, don't talk about employees. Does it not? Does. The lady there, the clerk, said it, don't talk about employees. What else are we talking about? I mean, why put that on there? What else are we talking about? There's no clipboard, there's no pen, too. But, anyway, my wife was, was an employee who got terminated at Hampton City School. I'm disabled, so I pay all the bills now. You know why? Because her pay went down 25% working for GCA. And her medical insurance went up 400%. 402 at Hampton City Schools on, in July, in June. I looked at her pay stub before I left there, 402. Her last three pay stubs said $0, and they called her and said, you owe the company. You owe the company $150 because the medical insurance is more than she makes. You know what? Here's the worst part. The human resource manager who we spoke to on Monday and last week, she, they made a mistake. We asked for the silver plan, they gave us the gold. Gold plan 797, the pay period. She only makes six, oh, what, $7.50, whatever that is. It, the math don't work. The math don't work. It's crazy. So we said, can you, is there any way to get it canceled on Monday? We called and said, you know, we, we can't afford it. They said, you have to have a life-changing event. Okay. 53 seconds. Guess what the life-changing event was? Can't afford it, right? Nope, that's not a reason. She's got 30, oh. This, before I get away from this, um, you cannot expect people to be happy working for Hampton City Schools if you don't treat them right. Our schools need good bus drivers, the way we have these people coming up and speaking about the transportation needs. They need to be paid more. They need benefits. Why is Hampton any different from Newport News, Norfolk, or Isle of Wight, or anywhere else, Virginia Beach? Why, why is that? Why is Newport News giving up on its employees when everyone else is paying them? Do you know what they said to my wife when we, when she got to work today? The human ma, re, resource manager called and said, your services are no longer required because we complained about the medical insurance. Because we complained about the medical insurance, and we said, can we cancel it? So they, they said, she asked why. She said, why? Why, why am I being fired? Your, your services are no longer required. That's the company you hired to clean our schools? My seven children's schools? I can't believe that. That's ridiculous. Let me, in closing, when you consider a clean school, consider who cleans your schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. That concludes our speakers for tonight's meeting. So we will move on to our items for action. We have three items on our agenda tonight for action, beginning with the revisions to the local plan for the gifted. Our next item on the agenda is revisions for the local plan for the gifted, and, um, is there a motion? For action on this item?
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the plan as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we accept the revisions to the local plan for the gifted. Is there any discussion? I do see that we have Ms. Grillo here, so if there were any questions for clarification, she's available to provide us additional information. Okay. There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move to item 7.02, which is nominations to serve on the local gifted advisory committee.
I move for approval of nominations.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Smith and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve the nominations for the local gifted advisory, and I am sorry, I am having trouble pulling that document up. Ms. Grillo, could you just provide for, um, um, the public's benefit, the names of the individuals?
Can we show it up there?
How long, how long is the list?
It's several pages of names, but...
Okay.
The short version. Deborah Blanton, Dr. Cornelius Bonzi, Michelle Bowers, Michelle Burwell, Deborah Butler, Dr. Kenneth Crum, Cynthia Davis, George Gayton, Laura Howerton, Kedra Jemmett, Arneese Johnson, Dr. Patricia Johnson, Stephanie Johnson, Gwen Lee, Linda McNeil, Jada Overton, Razik Patel, Nicole Pennix, Steve Russell, Tammy Russell, Clifford Schaefer, Sheila Shirey, Eric Stone, Jacqueline Williams, and Vicki Wismer.
Thank you, Ms. Grillo. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is item 7.03, the revision of School Board Policy, GCBDGB, which is Family and Medical Leave. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move approval of action item 7.03.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve tonight's revision of the School Board Policy, GCBDGB, Family Medical Leave. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on to tonight's deliberation. We have five items on the agenda tonight for deliberative, uh, action, beginning with item 8.01, the proposed VSBA bylaws changes. Mrs. Smith, I know you had, uh, submitted these documents for our consideration.
Yes. The Virginia School Board Association, VSBA, is proposing three changes to their bylaws. The document's attached on board docs, but, um, just for the public's knowledge, the there, the three changes are, the first one is that they're adding a second-at-large position, and then the second change is changing the term of office for regional officers from two one-year terms to one two-year term. And the third change was something that was actually approved previously and inadvertently omitted, so they'll... omitted, so they'll just be moving the election of regional officers from the spring to the fall. And if anybody had any comments on that, I'll be voting on this at the November 20th convention, so as the delegate, if there's consensus to support this, I will move forward with that.
Are there any questions or comments for Mrs. Smith regarding the Virginia School Board Association bylaw changes? She'll be representing us as our delegate and voting on our behalf on those items. Moving on to item 8.02, the proposed Virginia School Board Association legislative position amendments for consideration at the November delegation. Again, Mrs. Smith.
Yeah, and for this, VSBA has 15 new or revised legislative positions for which we'll be voting on. The lengthy document is on Board Docs. I do have a brief synopsis of each one that I'll just go through. I did ask Dr. Shiflett and her staff to review the positions to see impact at our school division, and so I will just give a very brief synopsis of each one and what feedback I got, and then if you all have any comments or want to let me know about consensus on each, we can do that. So the first one is VSBA supporting a new position to require annual certification by students and parents for religious exemption from compulsory attendance, and it seems to be support with staff to do that. Any discussion on that one? Any questions? All right. Number two is adding wording to the existing fair assessment of limited English proficient students to recommend funding for two pupil personnel positions per thousand limited English proficient students. There was a concern noted here that this would make it a staffing requirement that we would have to start to have, and while it does say to have state funding, that doesn't mean full funding. We would be obligating us to spend some of our funding to make that happen, and obligating funds to this requirement, so that's our concern with that item that I will bring up if that is the board's agreement.
Okay. Any...
All right. Number three, adding wording to the existing assessment reform and accountability reform. They gave more specifics on how assessments such as SOL should be reformed, and that wording looked acceptable to all, so I think that looked good. Y'all are good. All right. Number four, I'm just going to keep rolling along, so y'all just stop me when you need me. Adding wording to the existing local school board procurement exemptions to say that school boards should retain the ability to voluntarily enter into cooperative purchasing agreements with other government entities when those are financially beneficial. So that's providing an option to us, which we would support. Number five is adding wording to the existing funding formula impact position. It currently states that VSBA supports an equitable and understandable formula for state funding of elementary and secondary education. They want to add that that funding should be timely and reflects local ability to pay, local revenue generation capacity, differences in local cost of living, and the varying resource needs of local school divisions. The one concern that was pointed out with this was adding the phrase of including differences in local cost of living, because our cost of living in this area may be lower, and that might mean we would get lower funding as a result of that, so we will be saying something about that.
Thank you.
And then the next one, adding wording to the existing standards of quality and state education funding, say that additional state resources should be targeted to assist the school division with, and individual schools with high levels of student poverty, as well as local, state, and federal policies to help students in poverty, which of course we support. The next new VSBA position to support legislation that allows local school divisions to have the option to participate in the Commonwealth of Virginia's health care plan, and that's just an option that'll be available, so there was no concern there. Next, number eight was a new VSBA position to broadly define criteria for the 65% of division expenditures spent on instruction to include instructional support services, which we strongly support, so we will definitely be supporting that. The new VSBA position for additional state funding for governor's schools, again, support. Number 10, new VSBA position to support a state-adopted regional fee schedule for medical costs for self-insured employers rather than the current prevailing community rate. We are self-insured, and I was asked by Ms. Scott to get a little bit more information on that, so I'm going to be contacting VSBA to try to get a little more info on that and come back to that before November 20th, so we can make an informed decision. Number 11, new VSBA position to say state should provide funding for any additional physical education time requirements. Again, another support. Number 12, adding wording to existing standards of quality and state education funding position to include recommendation to adjust staff funding to provide the school division with one nurse for every 750 students as prescribed by the National Association of School Nurses. Again, look to support that. New VSBA position to oppose transfer of funding between school divisions for virtual learning and to encourage, yeah, encourage the Board of Education to develop regulations and standards of accreditation for virtual school courses. And again, support for that. Add word, number 14, add wording to existing educational technological equipment and grants programs to support leasing of technology, so funds are not limited to only purchasing. And finally, number 15 to support would be the new VSBA position to facilitate expansion of the Virginia Student Training and Refurbishment Program, known as STAR, in the Virginia school divisions. And some clarification on that, because I had no idea what STAR was. It's probably similar to what we piloted at Kickitane this year, where students are trained to repair computers and technology, and then they're able to support the technology in the schools and the technology staff. So they get trained and we get help, so that's basically what that is. So, there you go.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments for her? She will be going to the conference later this month to represent us in casting a vote on our behalf.
I just want to say, since a lot of the topic for our ears tonight was about money, that Virginia School Board Association, which we are active members of, says every year that we believe that the Virginia standards of quality should in fact be realistically and fully funded, and we fight for that along with other pro-education organizations every year, and we'll continue to do that because it's been a long time. And I love the wording in here because it says that the full funding, rather than just a modification of the formula and creating new categories should be the goal, and that's something we're all in favor of. If you've been listening to this exciting meeting today, you ought to tell your legislator that you want full funding for the standards of quality, for the programs we want to have for your children, which don't come for free, nor do their support services, nor do any of the other things that go with it. And we really can't do it because, as one of the gentlemen said, we can't print the money, unlike the federal government. We have to get it from someone, and the someone we need to get it from right now is the state. So, good, a constant point of view of the Virginia School Board Association, but one that we need to say over and over again right now.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Henry, and that makes me think of, as we were going through this, staff did notice things in the existing positions that could be changed to give us better support with funding. So the calls in the spring for new things to come up for VSBA to help us in lobbying for, and so we'll be following up with y'all to do that and be able to present those to VSBA and hopefully do some more advocating.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith, for taking the time to bring us up to date on all of those positions. We move on to the next item on deliberation tonight, which is item 8.03. It is policy IGAI, character education. The policy was reviewed for ongoing applicability and revisions were made consistent with the recommendations from VSBA, and there was a cross-reference added. Are there any questions or additional clarification needed on these items? We move on to item 8.04, which is policy IFEA, planning for instruction. This policy, again, was reviewed for ongoing applicability and revisions were made to provide flexibility to respond to the best practice regarding lesson planning and to ensure that the requirements encompass disciplines such as career and technical education, for which there are no standards of learning, and then there was a cross-reference added. There is no VSBA policy on this. Any questions for further clarity on this revision? And then we move on to policy IJ, which is guidance and counseling program. There were minor edits made and a cross-reference added. Any additional questions or additional deliberation on this item? Okay. There being none, we'll move on to deliberation first read. We only have two items in this area tonight. Item 9.01 is the review of school board policy BBBB, school board member oath of office. Ms. Reeves, would you speak to that?
This was... Yes, Madam Chair, this policy was coming up. We're trying to keep all of them reviewed every four years or so, so this was coming up for review. Needed no changes pursuant to the statute, so it's simply going to have a last reviewed unless anyone has any changes they wish to make.
Okay. Any questions for clarification on this policy revision? Okay. We'll move on then to the revision of school board policy JHC. This is item 9.02 on your agenda. It's student health services and requirements.
Yes, Madam Chair, the policy correctly refers to the Virginia Administrative Code, Section 2081-50, with regard to health screenings. However, the suggestion is to add some language that notifies within the actual policy language that those screenings include speech, voice, and language.
Okay. Any questions for clarification on this policy revision proposal? Okay. There being none, those items will move on to deliberation next week, actually, next month. Correct. We'll take those up at our December meeting. Moving on to informational items, our next meeting will actually be tomorrow night, November 6th, and that will be at Phoebus High School. It's at 6:00 PM. The Community Priorities Workshop will take place there. So that is actually an official meeting of our board, but it will take the form of the Community Priorities Workshop. We look forward to tomorrow night. Our next regular meeting of the Hampton School Board will be on December 4th at 6:30 PM at Jones Magnet Middle School. And then we do have also coming up in November, on November 14th, a Take Your Legislator to School Day. So we'll be getting more details on that, but we'll be taking a visit to a number of our buildings, actually. So Kickitane High School will be one of them, Spratley and Cary Elementary, so look forward to that as well. Dr. Shiflett, do you have other items for information?
Just a couple. Bethany United Methodist Church has entered into a partnership with Craft Elementary, and on November 8th, they will be going over to Craft at 10:00 AM, and we're very excited about this brand-new partnership. And then on November 13th, I'll be doing the Hampton 101 event, along with Ms. Bain and many others from the city, to tell people all about our school division. And it's, you know, it's always a great opportunity to talk about our school division and the things that we're accomplishing, and to help people who don't necessarily know a lot about the school division. So I'm really excited about doing that. It's always a great event. And then, of course, November 15th is our homeschooling community event. It starts at 10:00 AM at the Performing Arts Center, formerly known as the Teen Center, and we're really excited about this year because the focus is going to be on literacy. So I want to encourage all of you to come out and support this event.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Are there additional informational items from members of the board? Anyone have anything you wish to share for the good of the order? Everyone is just quiet. Okay. That would conclude our informational items. If there's no further business to come before this board, then this meeting is adjourned.